Bessie Jo, this is Bob Giles. Do we have all of our council members on the call, on the teams?
I can see everybody, but I do not see Tom. Tom, are you out there?
Let's wait a couple of minutes and then try to raise Tom again.
Okay.
Thank you. I see a little dot with Tom's initials. Tom, can you hear us?
I am here.
All right. This is Bob Giles. I'm going to open our session tonight. This is our regular meeting scheduled for May 21st at the McCall City Council. Want to welcome everyone and ask Bessie Jo to do a roll call for us, please.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Here.
Councilmember Machazek?
Present.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Here.
Thank you, Bessie Jo. Thank you, Council. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Our first two items are the agenda and consent agenda. Let's start with the overall agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. This is Melanie.
Second, Mike? Thank you, Mike. Everyone in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Our second item is the consent agenda. Would someone please make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. This is Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second, this is Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Bessie Jo, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes. Consent agenda has been approved. We will move on to public comments. And I understand our process, Bessie Jo, is that by 3:00 PM today, people were directed to submit written comments. If there are any written general comments for tonight's meeting, would you please read those to us?
Certainly, I have one. Hold on just one second here. All right, so this public comment was submitted by Douglas Irvine of 223 Ferguson Way in McCall. And he writes, Honorable McCall City Council Chair, Members and Citizens, thank you for inviting written comments. In my comments, as a local physician and a local citizen, I have some really great news. We have a tested and confirmed way to fight the spread of the virus. It was just reconfirmed by the Mass General Brigham Hospital System in Boston. Practice good hygiene, especially of hands and surfaces. Wash and sanitize your hands at least 10 times a day and always upon entering a room and upon exiting a room. Number two, physically distance yourself effectively of greater than six feet and avoid, whenever possible, staying in crowded indoor spaces for more than 20 to 30 minutes. Number three, use any mask to cover your nose and mouth in public to protect those around you from the droplets whenever you sneeze, cough, speak loudly, sing, or even just breathe. Number four, isolate yourself as long as you can manage, if you develop a cough, a fever greater than 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit, or any signs or symptoms of illness. Also isolate yourself if you have been exposed to anyone suspected of having COVID-19 or after you have returned from travel outside of Idaho. Keep yourself safe and isolated for 14 days past any signs, symptoms, or added risk factors. This approach has worked in the hotspots for COVID-19 in Boston and in other hotspots for COVID-19 around the world. Let's keep it working here in McCall and in all of our rural mountain communities, too. We have the esteemed professor Atul Gawande from Harvard Medical School to say all of the above and write about all of the above much more eloquently. Links to Dr. Gawande's written words, published nationally just last Wednesday, 5/13, and his interview broadcast nationally just last Sunday, 5/17, are provided below. They are well worth everyone reading, watching, and carefully considering to immediately put into each of our daily personal practices. I consistently use all four steps above when taking care of patients in the hospital and operating rooms and have done so over the past 28 years. They have worked without fail to prevent my getting, and more importantly, to prevent my spreading many life-changing and even deadly viral bacterial prion diseases, which include hepatitis B, hepatitis C, HIV, SARS, MERS, influenza, bacterial meningitis, and spongioform brain-wasting disease, e.g. mad cow disease. Since the start of this pandemic in Idaho, I have been practicing all four steps, both inside and outside the hospital, to prevent getting, and more importantly, to prevent spreading the COVID-19 virus. Please keep yourself and everyone around you safe and healthy by making the above four steps part of your daily personal practice. And please, with utmost kindness and caring, encourage everyone you can to do the same. Thanks again, Douglas H. Irvine, M.D., Ph.D. And then there's the references to the online, and I can include those in the minutes if people are interested.
That would be great. I think that'd be really helpful to get that documented. Thank you, Bessie Jo. All right, our first item that's an action item is public hearing. And this is Agenda Bill, let's see, Agenda Bill 20-154, Request to Approve VAC 19-01, The Vacation of Roosevelt Alley, Associated ESCRO Agreement, and Parks Donation Agreement. The purpose of the public hearing, which we are now going to open this public hearing, the purpose is to consider the vacation of an unnamed city alley which separates multiple parcels under a single ownership. And I'm going to ask Morgan Bisaw to lead us through the initial comments on the application.
Thank you. Good evening, Morgan Bisaw, McCall City Planner. The application in front of you this evening is a Vacation of Right-of-Way 1901 to vacate a portion of an unnamed city alley which separates multiple parcels under single ownership. I think the GIS document map sent out with your application materials is going to be really helpful to look at while we go through the staff report. And so hopefully you guys can have that in front of you. It shows the Kempthorn parcels in red, the city-owned parcels in blue, the section of alley to be vacated, and the section of alley to remain. Okay, one second. So the proposed alley does not have any known city utilities or other utilities within the alleyway subject to be vacated. Access to all parcels, no parcels will be landlocked due to this vacation. There is still access to parcels from Roosevelt and Luisa. As a condition of approval, access to the subject parcels from Pine Street shall be prohibited. The history of this Vacation of Right-of-Way application is the applicant's representative came to the city, gosh, a year and a half? Maybe it was almost two years ago now? To inquire whether the city would be interested in vacating a section of this Roosevelt alley. The city does not typically do vacations, but we did do a site visit to look at it. The city engineer at the time did not think that the alley would ever be constructed to connect to Pine, that that intersection would be too dangerous, it was too close to other intersections. There was the elevation change in a corner, and determined that that section of alley to the south would not be vacated for safety reasons. Although the section of alley to the north could possibly be developed. So through some back and forth, we determined that possibly a portion of this alley would qualify for a vacation. And that's the section that you can see in your map as the alley to be vacated, so the southern portion. So we thought that that would be in the benefit of public safety. However, there was always the potential that part of this alley could have been used for pedestrian improvements or other recreational purposes. So the Kempthorns proposed to donate $30,000 to the city to help fund improvements to Roosevelt Park and to make up for the potential use of the section of the platted alley for pedestrian and other recreational purposes. And that Parks proposal and agreement is attached, as well as an ESCRO agreement, for the $30,000. If the Parks improvements are not completed on or before December 31st, 2021, the Kempthorns would be able to access the funds in this account to complete the remainder of the park improvements. Per the Parks agreement, you will see that the city would be able to design and submit a proposal for the Parks redesign until December 31st of this year. And at that time, the Kempthorns would have 30 days to review this proposal for Parks improvements and to submit comments. And then at that time, we'd have another full year to complete these improvements with the Kempthorns' money. There is a typo in the staff report. It says during the December 10th, 2020 meeting, but it is the December 10th, 2019 meeting, the McCall Area Planning and Zoning Commission held a properly noticed public hearing and unanimously recommended these applications for approval by the city of McCall. Two letters of support were received in support of these applications. And those were submitted as part of the application materials. And so those are both in the packet, two letters of support. Since that time, I've received another public comment. But looking at the procedures for tonight, I guess I will wait to read those into the record until the appropriate step of the process. The applicant is also here, well, their representative is, to further present the application, their proposal, and answer questions as well.
Thank you, Morgan. Before we ask the applicant to present, let me run through real quickly with each council member to see their initial thoughts on this, if they have any questions or just initial thoughts to share with you, Morgan. Tom, I'll start with you.
All right. I was trying to look at the picture here and get a, I was just reading the letter that was in here against the vacation of this property. I guess I'm along with them, like, why? What's the benefit? So that would be my question.
Great. Well, I'm sure we'll get to that from Morgan's perspective, or Mr. Milliman will talk to us. Thank you. Melanie?
I don't personally have a problem with vacating that section of alley considering they own both parcels adjacent to it. I think it makes sense if we're not going to be using it. I never really love having any sort of monetary donation tied to something like this. But, you know, just looking at how this all plays out, I guess I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I have a few thoughts. One, I'd like to, you know, commend the planning department and our staff's efforts to work with the applicants. Couple thoughts, probably five or six here. On the subject of giving up city-owned land or right-of-ways, I think we should be looking at the big picture, future land use, what's in the public interest, and have a plan in place with respect to all prior to making a decision to give up city land. And prior, we should, I think we should have a plan with specific approval criteria identified and that this opportunity, if we're going to be giving up city land, like alleyways, that that opportunity should then be available to all right-of-way, or in this case, alley-adjacent landowners on an equitable basis. So I think we need to, before giving up alleys, for instance, I think that we should have some planning in place that kind of gives directive that would be open and available to others as well. So not doing it on a, you know, one-shot kind of discussion. Another note in that regard is that I think we should be very careful to take into consideration future land use. As once city land is given away or sold, it's difficult to get back. I think we should also consider public access for potential future utility needs, vehicular access, walking or bike paths on alleys or other right-of-ways. Even if there's not an immediate need, we don't know what future needs might be 50 or 100 years from now. Another note is that the parcel on Luisa could be sold or redeveloped by future landowners and would need the majority of that alley, if not all of it, for driveway and garage access to develop these lots. The reason being that Luisa is substantially built up. When we did the Pine-Wooly Connector, Luisa is significantly built up there, so there's not really vehicular access off of Luisa to those lots that front Luisa. So the alley would be necessary. There was a plan back in, I think, 2007 that was proposed for those lots that showed essentially kind of boardwalk entrances off Luisa and then garages coming in off of the alley, which seemed like a feasible plan at the time. Obviously, it was not developed. Another item, our planning department on two other applications on the same alley, a block to the north, asked the owner to locate driveway and garage access from the alley, which meets our design guidelines of foster human-scale street fronts, allows for garages to be built from the alleys on narrower lots where a garage will not fit facing the street due to design guidelines and city code restraints for smaller street frontage or non-conforming lots, which these individual lots fall into that category. Also, a block to the east, Dawson Avenue, was given up to a developer who subsequently didn't complete their development, defaulted, and then they built narrow homes on the 30-foot-wide non-conforming lot. That street, Dawson, is still owned by the people who held the note for that developer, which is an ongoing issue between the city and trying to address that. And back to my point of when we give away right-of-ways, they can be very difficult to get back. So we have an example just across the street there. And as an FYI, on the homes on Dawson, between Pine and Struce, those narrow homes there, because Dawson Avenue is owned by the McGregor's and not the city, the only way those homes have been able to sell or transfer ownership and have title insurance is for one reason, and that's because the alley exists. So they're legal right-of-way to access those properties, while physically, they don't access that way. But legally, the only way those properties can be sold is because the alley exists. So for all of those above reasons, I think we need to be very careful about giving up right-of-ways, and I don't think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mike. I think that'll help when the applicant and Mr. Milliman address some of those things. And Morgan probably has some thoughts on those as well. I'm hoping, Morgan, that you and staff, other staff, and planning and zoning have talked about some of those things. So let's move to Colby's comments. And then after that, I would propose we have Steve Milliman address the council and try to cover some of those items that folks have raised. And then after that, we'll deliberate some and ask if there's other questions of staff or the applicant. So, Colby, your thoughts?
I think Mike very eloquently covered the couple of thoughts that I had. So, yeah, thanks for that, Mike. Yeah, let's keep moving.
All right. Steve, do you think this would be a good point for you to step in?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. Steve Milliman, representing the applicants, Dirk and Patricia Kempthorn. It's a pleasure to appear before you tonight in this unique venue. I think you're familiar with the property that the Kempthorns own. It is shown on the map. They own a house on the corner of Pine and Roosevelt, which is about a 100-year-old house that they have rehabilitated. They own two lots north of that on Roosevelt, and then they own two parcels to the east on Luisa. The Kempthorns have been engaged in a pretty aggressive process of cleaning up the lots, rehabilitating them, preserving the old schoolmaster's house that used to sit on Roosevelt and now is to the rear of the property. In the process, taking out multiple, multiple dump truck loads of garbage because the Luisa property had become an informal or formal neighborhood garbage dump and attempting to beautify the property into a aesthetically pleasing and attractive residential property. They have no development plans for the property beyond that. The alley in question, as is pointed out, is about 16 feet wide and dissects the property. The application is to vacate just the portion that is adjacent to Kempthorn property on both sides and to not vacate the remainder to the north. So that if, for some reason, under any future application, alley access was desired by the city, it could still be accomplished by coming off of fur and down the alley from the north. The neighbors who adjoin on this alley received notice of and were invited to a neighborhood meeting, and several attended and either expressed no opposition to the application or support for it. They again received notice of the Planning and Zoning Commission's hearing and expressed no opposition. The only opposition expressed there was from Mr. Darmody, who submitted the letter Morgan referred to. He and his wife have a building about a block and a half north on the west side of Roosevelt, so across the street, and about a block and a half north. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended your approval of this application, which I think speaks loudly for the merits of the application because we all know vacation of any alleys or right-of-way is an unusual occurrence. And I'm fully aware of that, was fully aware of that when I proposed this vacation. I think it is unique in a number of respects. As has been pointed out, there are no utilities in the alley. The alley is unimproved, has several mature trees growing in the middle of it. The alley is not on any plan for any public use. As the city engineer pointed out, the approach to this alley, if it were improved off of Pine, is very severe and has essentially no line of sight and would not be appropriate, in fact, for use for vehicular access, which is one of the reasons for the condition prohibiting that. And the probable reason, I believe, when the McCall addition was platted, that the alley was included was a notion of rear-entry garages on residential lots, which of course could still occur here. The, I appreciate the council's questions, the why, Tom's question of why and what's the benefit. I guess I look at this in a couple of ways. The first question, I think, is, is there a public need for the alley? And, or for at least that short section. And while I certainly concede that none of us can see forever into the future, I think it is noteworthy that all of your department's staff have looked at this application, and they all have endorsed it. And no one sees, in fact, a practical need, public need for this segment of the alley. And the flip side of the question of what's the benefit, I think, is the corresponding offer, which is memorialized in the Park Donation Agreement, to improve Roosevelt Park according to the budget that was established for that improvement by city staff. That corner is becoming an entryway into what is becoming an increasingly interesting neighborhood. Certainly, the Kempthorns rehabilitated 100-year-old home is Certainly, the Kemthorns rehabilitated 100-year-old home is a very attractive component of that, as Dr. Charles points out in his letter. He's right across the street. And the improvement of Roosevelt Park would certainly enhance that. Is on an actively-used pedestrian throughway, if you will, and would therefore, I think, be attractive to pedestrians walking by to use it as a pocket park, as opposed to the de facto snow storage area and parking lot that it now serves. While I think it would be, per Mike's comments, I think it's always nice if you can have a blanket procedure that can be applied and fixed criteria that can be applied, but I think in that question of vacations, they are very, very site-specific. And it is why there have been very few of them in my tenure working with this council. And I think they have been evaluated on a site-specific basis. The state code provides us the criteria that it is deemed in the public interest to vacate, and I think both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt, in this case, that it was. So while I think it's sensible to talk about planning, and I'm never going to be one to argue against planning, I don't know that this particular situation would lend itself or that the question of vacations would lend itself to a fixed set of criteria. I think the criteria would wind up being exactly those that have been applied here. Is there a current public need? No. Is there a perceived future public need for this 16-foot-wide, unimproved alley? No. Is there public benefit perceived from the offer to donate money to improve Roosevelt Park? Yes. And I think those are the kind of criteria that, in any event, you would want to look at. In terms of a few of the specific comments, Mike mentioned that the Luisa parcel was the subject of a development application years ago, and he's quite right, it was. It was a rather dense condominium application, and it contemplated access in part from the alley. I would point out two things about that. The applicants have no such plans for any development of that type or anything different than what they have done, but if they or someone came forward and wanted to propose a development of that Luisa property, and the city felt that there should be access from the quote-unquote "alley," that would absolutely still be an available ask, because the Kemthorns would own that property and could get to it on the portion of the alley that is not being vacated. So in a sense, if there is ever a scenario where the city feels that, hey, if you want to proceed with this application, we want you to provide some access from what was the alley, the property owner would have every ability to do that. And if the city's position on such an application was, we want that dedicated, the applicant would have every opportunity and power to do that as well. So that opportunity is not being lost here, because the applicant would own all the property, and the applicant would have the ability to provide that access by coming from FER or down the portion of the alley that's left intact, winding up exactly where one would wind up if the alley were still there. It's also noteworthy that the Kemthorns own the two lots to the north on Roosevelt, and so, again, if some future owner at some point in the future wanted to develop the property, there's also an opportunity to provide access off of Roosevelt on one of the other parcels, which did not exist for the owners of the Luisa parcel when they proposed the condominium. They did not own the property all the way across to Roosevelt. So there are many access options available other than coming off of Luisa if the property were ever developed, despite it not being the remotest intention of the current owners. And that would be coming down the alley from FER and getting to the same spot coming off of Roosevelt. But what would have not been the case would be to come off of Pine, and I think what your prior and current Public Works Department persons have pointed out is that simply it would be a dangerous and unacceptable access. So from my perspective, no access is being given up, and that is about the only possible need, I guess, I could see for that alley. And that would involve a scenario that is not on the owner's horizon, but admittedly, as Mike points out, could be on someone else's. But that isn't lost here. What this application does is consolidate the property. The property still would front two public streets to the west and the east and a public alley to the north. So I think any access issues would be preserved. So let me see if any of the other comments at this point. You know, future land use for that area under your future land use map is residential. And so currently, the city's vision for that area and specifically the Kemthorn properties is residential, which, again, is in no way impaired by this action. This simply allows the properties to be consolidated, landscaping and irrigation and other improvements to be extended across the alley without the Kemthorns being fearful that they are engaged in activities which they are not entitled. I think staff's visit to the site was very helpful, and when you really look at this onsite, it's even more clear that this is not an alley that there is any public interest in leaving there in its unimproved state or otherwise. So I certainly appreciate the comments, but I think that vacations are very, very unique and need to be evaluated on their individual merits. And I think any other property owner has the right to come forward with an application and have it evaluated on its individual merits, but those, as I say, are very, very site-specific. And this is the most unique vacation application I have seen, in that it does not impair or affect in any way anyone else's access to any other property. And I have never been involved in a vacation that didn't affect, one way or another, some other property owners' access to their property that had to be dealt with as part of the application. The other, and that's arguably why the neighbors on the alley have no problem with this application, because the portion of the alley they are joining remains fully in place, and there would be an opportunity to improve it. So I think it's a very unique factor about this. I think the status of its approach to Pine Street is a very unique factor. I think the width of it would not lend itself to any, certainly, type of street improvement. And all of the plans as far as bike and pedestrian and the rest either rely on Roosevelt or other areas and have never looked to this alley for public use, as opposed to the Roosevelt Pocket Park, which I think has a prospect of having a significant amount of public use. And so from my perspective, to not use a worn-out phrase, this really is a win-win situation, where the Kemthorns get to consolidate their property, the city gets to finish a corner park that it does not currently have the resources to finish and to thereby beautify that area, and no private property owners' rights are affected in the process. And that, to me, is an attractive package. The parks donation agreement and the escrow agreement have both been reviewed and approved by your city attorney after requesting edits which were made. The escrow agreement, as you can see, has also been approved and signed by the title company. It's really a construction management agreement. And although, as Morgan pointed out, the agreement provides that the city will provide the Kemthorns the plans for the park and allow them comment, the agreement also provides that the city retains 100% control over the final design features for the park. This is not a review and approve or veto. This is simply a review and comment. And so it's the city's 100% discretion as to precisely what improvements are put in the park, but the money would be in escrow and available for use for that purpose. So I would hope that you will recognize that a lot of work has gone into this, both at the staff level and that the Planning and Zoning Commission, who I have not found to be readily willing to engage in vacations or recommend them, unanimously thought this one was appropriate, and that none of the properties on this alley have any objection to it, and that this strikes me as a situation where it makes sense to move forward, given the merits of this specific site and of the specific property. It's neither here nor there, but I think the portion vacated is about 2,500 square feet. If you project the assessed values of the properties, the Kemthorn properties on both sides, that would result in a valuation of the vacated portion at somewhere between $13,000 and $20,000. The state code does not provide that compensation is required for a vacation. The entire concept of the park improvement is that the Kemthorns felt that if they were asking for something, the issue is, could the public be benefited by it? And the way to benefit the public was to see Roosevelt Park turned into something attractive and usable by the public. And that makes sense to me. So I would hope you will give this serious consideration. It's been a long time in the works coming to you and has not been casually proved along the way. And I would certainly welcome any questions that any council members might have.
Thank you, Steve. Before we go to questions, council, a couple of things. Number one, Steve, thanks for taking good notes and really listening to the questions and being really thorough on your thoughts and answering some of those questions and giving background. Second thing is, I would suggest, in our process for this hearing, before we go back to Steve Milliman representing the applicant and ask further questions, I think it would be helpful to have Morgan read the, I believe there are three official letters in our packet, and perhaps there have been some more since our packet was prepared, that are part of this hearing. So either Bessie Jo or Morgan, would one of you read those into the record?
Hi, yes, and I actually realized that during my staff report, I forgot to read through the recommended conditions of approval, so I'll run through those first, and then I'll read through the public comment.
Thank you.
So the four outstanding recommended conditions of approval are that access to the subject parcels, access from Pine Street shall be forbidden, which is basically the section of alley that's being vacated. The applicant shall prepare for city review all necessary paperwork to execute any deed to transfer title to the vacated street. Prior to the city's execution of any deed to transfer title to the vacated street, the newly vacated alleyway shall be combined with the adjacent parcels, which will be required to be combined into a single parcel through the record of survey process. Prior to the city's execution of any deed to transfer title to the vacated alley, a 12-foot-wide snow storage and utility easement shall be dedicated to the city from parcels. I don't want to read the whole parcel numbers, but the two parcels ending in 018A and 023C belong Luisa and Pine Street. So those were the four outstanding conditions of approval. Bessie Jo, can you let me know about reading in these letters? I intend to read in the letter that was not included in the packet, but should I also read into the record the two that were, the two letters of support that were for it?
I don't believe that you need to read the ones that were already in the packet, only anything new. And so I have one as well.
I'm sorry?
I have a letter as well that came to me regarding this.
That I haven't seen. Okay, great. So there were two letters of support in the packet, which were there for everyone to read, and I will read the letter that I received after the packet had already been distributed. Morgan Bissah, my name is Rick Darmody, and my wife and I own the building at 1306 Roosevelt Avenue in McCall. We live in Boise primarily, but enjoy spending as much time as we can in McCall. I would like to share a few thoughts about the application referenced in the subject line. I would like to start by saying that I do not know the Kemthorns and my opposition to this application has nothing to do with them or their property. One, I do not oppose this application. Two, I don't understand why the city would give away right of way that it already has, regardless of whether it's being used for its intended purpose currently as an alley to access property or not. I cannot see an advantage to the city of giving up its possible use in the future. Three, if this alley is vacated, it appears that it could cause access issues in the future with the adjacent properties that share the alley located on Luisa. I recognize that the vacation doesn't go all the way to the property line of the large parcel on Luisa, but the remaining access may not be sufficient for any future development of that Luisa Avenue property. Finally, and I say this with all due respect to the Kemthorns and the city, but the offer to donate money to develop the park at the corner of the property seems as though it should be separate from this application. If the Kemthorns want to donate money to help develop the park, I think that is wonderful. Tying that donation for the park to this application could be seen as quid pro quo, whether intended as such or not. Thank you for reading my comments and taking them into consideration.
Thank you, Morgan. Bessie Jo, were there any other comments that are part of this public hearing that we've received today or anything up to the 3 o'clock deadline?
Yes, I received one.
Would you please read it to council?
Certainly. Jim Zokan writes, "I am not for the city giving up public land right of way for private interest. Landowner asking for City of McCall to give up alley right of way between two properties he owns, no. Owner has authorized infrastructure within alley right of way, irrigation and electrical. Owner is bribing city with $30,000 to take deal. This is not how city should operate. City has asked other residents to use alley for future property improvements, new garages, rather than come off-street, use alley. This is more aesthetically pleasing and offers more flexibility to property owner with reduced setback from alley. City wants more affordable housing. Alley accessory dwellings would fit that demand. Dawson Avenue, one block from alley in question, was rezoned by city in 2005 and given to private development. City is now working on getting the street sitting right of way back, costing city public tax money to do so. Giving up city land reduces city's options for future land decisions. Even if the city was still in favor of selling the land to this private landowner, it should not be done willy-nilly. Just like annexation of land, there needs to be a process for disposal as well, and ordinance needs to develop to go through appropriate channels. Again, I am not for the city giving up public land right of way for private interests."
Thank you, Bessie Jo. So what I think would really be helpful right now is to have a really robust discussion between Steve Milliman, the applicant, and the entire council. So rather than just doing a rebuttal, Steve, perhaps we can combine that with asking each council member, as I call on them, to see if perhaps their questions have been narrowed to some very, you know, limited number of objections or comments or questions, and then have some good dialogue between council and the applicant. Does that work for council?
Yeah, that's good.
Mayor, if I might, this is Bessie Jo. We still might want to make sure that there's nobody on the phone that wanted to make a public comment as well.
Oh, I thought your rules that I was reading said that you had to submit it by 3 o'clock. 3:00, so we can do this live. I'll let you facilitate that. And do you have anyone on the phone? I think now would be a great time to have them talk to us.
So if anybody on the phone wanted to make a public comment regarding this public hearing, please speak up. Oh, there you go. I guess we don't have anybody.
Well, thanks for reminding me of that opportunity, Bessie Jo. You had written it down in my script, I just got confused on that. So, all right, hearing done. I think it would be helpful to run through our list one by one of each council member and have them talk directly to you, Steve, and have some back and forth on what we've been talking about. So I'm going to start by saying I think I learned a lot, and let's go to Tom.
Yeah, Steve answered all my questions well. I don't have any other questions on it.
Thank you. Melanie?
I don't have any questions. I do have one concern, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to bring this up, but Mr. Darmody, who put in a letter of opposition, I think we need to be clear on record that council member Mike Machazek actually lives in his building.
Okay, no, I think it's important that we all share those kinds of things.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying anything for or against how Mike votes, but I think we all need to know that.
No, that's a disclosure. We have Bill Nichols on the phone or on teams tonight, is that correct? Mr. Nichols?
I'm here, Mayor.
So if there's, thank you. If there's any guidance you need to provide us as we proceed and we share information like we just shared, please, please get online and talk to us, okay?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I don't know that a landlord tenant or other type relationship constitutes a conflict of interest under the statutes. So it's, it would probably be helpful if council member Machazek could at least disclose what the circumstances are, and then the council can decide on its own whether or not that constitutes a conflict of interest or not. I think the important thing is just to have it out on the table.
Great. That's great advice. Mike, could you describe that relationship?
Yeah, I rent space in the building that Rick Darmody owns. My understanding from him is that he received a letter about this and responded.
Thank you. Bill, based on that and the information you've heard, do you, do you feel that we're dealing with a conflict of interest situation or anything close to that?
Look, Mr. Mayor, I think the question to council member Machazek is whether his landlord-tenant relationship with Mr. Darmody has any effect or impact on his ability to act impartially in deciding this matter.
Could you address that, Mike?
Sure. No, it doesn't, but I would divert to your thoughts there, Bill. I saw the letter the same time everybody else did. I have no issues either way. There's nothing that relates to my relationship and renting space from Rick Darmody and him sending a letter in response to the letters that go out to neighbors within 300 feet of a subject property when there's a land use application. So do you have any other thoughts on that, Bill? Take your advice.
Okay, well, it sounds to me, like, it sounds to me as though what you're saying is that you believe that you have the ability to act impartially, decide this thing partially, regardless of the fact that your landlord has sent a letter in opposition, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mike. How does counsel feel about that? I'm going to ask each of you, are you comfortable with what we just summarized? Tom, you comfortable with that? We just summarized that there, the, all the information has been disclosed by Mike and that it is not affecting his ability to make an impartial decision. So I'm going to ask each of you, Tom, are you comfortable with that?
Tom is muted, so I don't know if he realizes he's muted.
Okay, maybe someone could...
What was that? I'm sorry.
I was just, we just had a pretty robust discussion on conflict of interest, apparent conflict of interest.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm going to ask each council member if they're comfortable. Mike has disclosed very openly his relationship as a tenant, and he said it would not affect his ability to make an impartial decision. You know, he could make an objective decision on this, on this application. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Melanie?
Yes, now that we've spoken to Mike about it, I am comfortable with that.
Great, and I appreciate everyone bringing this out. As, as we know, the training that we've gone to, it's important to always disclose these things. Mike's comfortable with it. Colby, how about you?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that statement.
Okay, and then speaking as a council member, I'm comfortable with that. Bill, thank you for guiding us through that process. So I think we're ready. We've had all public comments read. I think we have, I think counsel has done a really good job of laying out concerns, questions. We've had a really good discussion on some of that. I'm wondering, Steve, if it might be good to do like a five-minute rebuttal on that, and then I think we need to have some real pointed liberation involving you and other words, counsel, asking you more questions before we go to, you know, our final strategy of whether we're prepared tonight to make a motion. So let me give you three to five minutes to, now that, now that you've heard all of the, all of the information and all of the stuff from the public hearing, perhaps you could help us a little bit.
Thank you, I'm happy to do so, and I appreciate Mike's position on his relationship with Mr. Darmody, and I certainly trust Mike in his response. I, just to be completely candid, I would have liked to have known that on the front end of this discussion, but it looks like the issue has been dealt with. I take issue with both Mr. Darmody and Mr. Zokan, neither of which are directly affected by this application, and their reference to giving away public land. And I mean, that's a juicy kind of fun thing to say, and we should never give away public land. Well, guess what? For starters, I don't think this is a giveaway. I think this has been a disciplined and diligent assessment by city staff and all departments and the P and Z of the overall public interest. And if the Kempthorns were standing before you saying, hey, we would just like to have it, maybe those comments would be more merited. But because of the kind of people they are, they, they themselves brought up the issue of the park and said, we, we want the council and the city to feel good about this and to feel that the public interest has been served by this. And so I don't view this as a giveaway. I view this as an assessment that this short excitement of alley has no public purpose, and that the improvement of Roosevelt Park has a rather compelling public purpose. The other comments that were common to both letters, and I had not seen Mr. Zokan's letter, so I appreciate that it was read and I have opportunity to respond to it, is this notion of somehow it's going to take away a potential access for the Louisa property. And as I noted, that's just simply not true. If the Kempthorns or any future owner came in and said, you know, we've decided maybe we do want a project on that Louisa parcel, the city would have every right to say, fine, we want a secondary access, and you got to show us how you're going to provide it. And under this scenario, there would be two options. It could be provided off of Roosevelt on vacant land owned by the Kempthorns, or it could be provided off the very alley that connects to the Kempthorn property. Keep in mind, the vacation goes to the northern edge of the Kempthorn property. The alley continues north defer from there. So the city, if that happened, and I will tell you, if the Kempthorns were here, they would tell you, I don't know why we're talking about that, because we have no intention of ever doing that. But if that happened with a future owner, the city would be within its rights to say, you provide us with that secondary access and you show us how you're going to do it, and we want it dedicated. And there would be nothing unusual about that dialogue or about the request to dedicate private land as part of a development application. That hasn't gone away. That's still there and it's still available. But the fact of the matter is, this strip of ground with mature trees on it has no value to the city, and those that you pay to evaluate these matters have told you they cannot foresee any possible public use of it, and particularly a use off of Pine Street. The potential use off of Fur has not been taken away. Mr. Zokan talked about appropriate channels. This application has followed all the appropriate channels. This will be the second public hearing after a neighborhood meeting with full notice and opportunity to comment. There were actually more letters in support at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I should have been more diligent in getting them into this record. There was one voice in opposition at the Planning and Zoning, that was Mr. Darmody, and the public input has been in favor. And that factors also into the question of public interest. You do not have any outcry from the public, your constituents, that this is an imprudent decision. And I think, as we all know, that's noteworthy, because if there was anyone who felt otherwise, they wouldn't be shy about telling you. And we had good attendance at the neighborhood meeting and lots of questions. I've had a number of calls mainly because people were just trying to orient themselves as to where this was, and then when they finally understood it, they said, well, there's no alley there now. And no, there isn't. And so there's been quite a bit of involvement in the process and the channels that are called for in your ordinance and under state code have been followed. So I, I'm proud of this application. I think it's a good application. I think it's in the public interest. I think the public will be benefited by it, and I don't think giving up this 2,500 square feet so that the Kempthorn property can be consolidated and having Roosevelt Park improved is anything that, that any decision maker should feel anything but good about. So that would, I guess, Mr. Mayor, be my rebuttal as such. But again, I'm certainly anxious and willing to engage in any questions that, that any of the council members who haven't yet posed them have.
Thank you, Steve. So I'm gonna, we're gonna go in reverse order. I'm going to ask Colby to start us out, then we'll go to Mike, Melanie, and Tom. And what I'd like each of you to do, and I'll offer my comments last, but what I'd like each of you to do is if there's any questions that haven't been answered by either Morgan or by Steve, I'd like you to ask those. And if your questions have been answered, I'd like you to share with Steve if you have, and the rest of us during this public hearing. I'd like each council member to share where you're leaning. Do you feel that this is something that we want to move forward with a motion? So I guess I would call that deliberation. All right, Colby, would you lead us out?
Yeah, sure, I'd love to. Steve, what's the width of this alley again? I know you said it, but I didn't write it down.
Colby, I'm taking measurements off of the county GIS map. That's the only place I could find, and it would appear to me it's about 16 feet.
Got it, thanks. Yeah, I guess, you know, my only, I got a couple of concerns. It's, it's a generous offer by the Kempthorns to compensate the city to go towards further development of the park. But it is, has been pointed out a couple of times in this discussion that it is, I guess the optics are a little, it could be perceived differently on that. That's one concern I have, and I know that's not a question specifically for you, Steve, it's just a concern. Second one is, I don't see why the city would give up that one small portion that is contiguous with that pocket park there, meaning the end of the alley that goes to the south. That little, little portion between the Kempthorn property on the west side and the east side, there's one section that kind of goes to the south and would, would take away a pretty nominal section of that park, but that's really my only objection to the city giving up land on this, is that we would be giving up a section of our little park there. I think all the other concerns have been pretty well addressed. It's, looks like there's, you know, reasonable access from the, from Fur Street to get into that back corner there. I think all of the comments from city staff regarding that, you know, the intersection of Pine Street.
Morgan, can we get that map put back on the screen? And I, I'm a little confused. I think, I think Colby's right on, it's just, there's a lot of detail here, and I was wondering if Steve, you and Morgan, if we can put that map that used to be on our screen and answer Colby's question, because in our, in our write-ups, as I was preparing for this meeting, I thought we were keeping the pocket park, it's still city-owned land, so...
And, I'm sorry, go ahead, Colby.
Yeah, yeah, go, go ahead, you might, might be answering what I...
I think, Colby, am I correct, is Morgan circling with her cursor the area you were referring to?
Yeah, that's, that is the one little tiny section.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely correct, you are keeping the pocket park. What Colby is pointing out is that little southernmost rectangular portion of the alley that is under that to-be-vacated part is, is, I guess was designated that way because just to the east of that is Kempthorn property.
Okay.
The other way, yeah, right there, Morgan. I would say this, however, if, if that is in any respect a concern for the council, and if the council would prefer to move the vacation line north to exactly where Morgan is now indicating, I don't believe that the Kempthorns would have any objection to that. The last thing they want to do is, is interfere with any possible park development. So if, if, if that's important to the council, then I, I think that would be acceptable to the Kempthorns to just move the vacation line north to that common property line coming across and leave that little southern rectangle that Colby was referring to in public ownership.
And this is Morgan Bisaw, and I should have clarified that when the alley is vacated, it's split down the middle and the half... it's split down the middle, and the half of it goes to the property owner on each side. So, it says alley to vacate, but the eight feet to the west would go to the city, because we own the parcel to the west, and the eight feet on the east side of the alley would go to the Kempthorns if the vacation line was not moved, because they own the parcel to the east, if that clarifies.
You know, Morgan, this is Steve.
Both of you, go ahead, Steve.
I appreciate that, Morgan, that's a very apt observation. But that being said, if it's important to any council members to retain that little rectangle and move the vacation line north, we're fine with that.
Thank you, Steve. Colby, I sense that that would be important to you, is that correct? Now, now's the time for each of us to kind of weigh in on that. Is that something you'd be interested in?
I mean, I would be interested in it, just, just to ensure that we have, you know, maintain at least that one small section that, that we're likely to improve on. And I understand that the Kempthorns are definitely generous neighbors and like, really supportive of all this stuff, and I think that they've done a great job on cleaning that little zone up. But I think, you know, it makes sense for us to, to maintain that one little section there, just to give us a, I don't know, just for geometry's sake, I guess, I don't know. But that's all I got, and I, other than that, I'm interested to hear the rest of the conversation, so.
Thank you for sharing specifics, I appreciate it. Mike, I'm gonna go to you next, and I'd like you to talk about that little sliver, and also just the overall, how are you feeling about this right now?
Yeah, the sliver isn't too much, as much of a concern as, or overriding the, you know, all the items that I pointed out earlier. So I don't really have any other questions, and I, it's probably not necessary for me to, you know, kind of reiterate the points that I was also making. I think the only thing that I would add is just that, you know, when we look at highest and best use of property, and we look at the future, that we, we don't know what the future holds, and we anticipate that, one thing that we do know is that people who currently own property aren't going to own that property forever. And I think that we need to be thinking down the road as far as, you know, what, what may come in the future, and that's why in this particular case, while I very much appreciate everything that Steve has said, all of the diligence on the part of Steve, on the part of the planning staff, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I just don't think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, Melanie, could you address those two things? Do you feel, go ahead.
First of all, the little sliver, I could actually go either way on. It's, you know, 16 feet, and it wasn't originally part of the pocket park, but, you know, it could be nice to add that into it, if they were unopposed to that. One of the reasons that I feel pretty confident that this is not a poor move for us, is that they would be making this entire parcel a single parcel. So, in combining those two tax parcels, it doesn't give them a lot of leeway to just go and develop this bigger area to the east in a way that, you know, we wouldn't want them to. And it still leaves the rest of the alleyway to the north. I just don't see any, any real negative impact here. I really feel like the staff has done an impeccable job, and Planning and Zoning has done all of their diligence as well, so I would have to agree with this.
Thank you, Melanie. Tom?
Yeah, I'm just, I was just looking at it, and I don't know if anybody mentioned the zoning for these parcels.
It's mentioned in our write-ups, in our packet, maybe Morgan can.
Yeah, maybe this question's for Morgan. So 5018A is, if what I'm reading right, is zoned R16, and 5009B is R8. So if they join those two together, what would the zoning be on that?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we are hearing you.
Okay, so I think there was a bit of a miscommunication, possibly. So, you're right, this is because I'm not steering the, the map here. The two parcels on the right, you're correct, those two, and the little one to the south of it?
Yes.
South, little one south, yep. So those are zoned R16. And then the two to the west are zoned R8. So there is a difference in zoning. When I was reading through the outstanding conditions and spoke of the two parcels being combined into a single parcel, it is the two parcels that are zoned R16. So, the two parcels to the east that are zoned R16, that one, and the little one to the south of it, are being combined into a single parcel so that that southerly parcel is not landlocked, so that it has access, because it currently doesn't front anything except for, for the alley. So it is being combined so that it has access. Those two parcels are not required to be combined with the two parcels to the east, I'm sorry, west, the west. They're not, so they're, they're their own parcels. So when I spoke of parcels being combined.
You were talking north and south, not.
Yes, exactly. So it's not going to combine the two parcels of different, of different zones.
Is that correct, Steve, that they're not going to be combining east and west, north and south?
That's how I understood the condition of approval, yes.
Okay, thank you. And Morgan, thanks for clarifying that. So with that, Tom, are you feeling okay about this proposal?
Well, I just, I just find it, I don't know, I think that kind of, it didn't confuse me more, but it looks like they're planning to do a development with that piece of property right there, which is great, but I don't like the, you know, I don't like the fact that there's a $30,000 donation in it. I'd rather see that separate or somewhere else, just because of the way it looks, this makes the city look. It makes it look like we're selling a useless piece of land for a benefit, and I just don't feel super good about that.
Okay, I did ask that question, I talked to Annette, city manager, I believe it was on Monday, and we, we discussed all, all of the components of this application, and whether they were legally defensible, and whether these types of things have been done in other cities. And my recollection was, this is, this is a common way to do a vacation, to have these types of things discussed and fully disclosed. So I'm gonna ask Annette for your, I'll call it final thoughts at the end of the week on this application.
Okay, well, what the mayor and I discussed was just my previous experience in Oregon, where we did do right-of-way vacations from time to time in the city I worked for there. And it's pretty normal practice that, at least in Oregon, it was a requirement that the public be given or reimbursed for the value of the property they were giving up. And so we did negotiate different agreements with those property owners that were going to receive the public property, and it could just be cash, or, you know, exchange, or whatever. And so it sounds like in Idaho, that's not a requirement to ensure that the public is reimbursed for the value of the property being given up, but that has been my experience, that that's not, I mean, I guess you could call it quid pro quo in a positive way. The public is giving up the value of this land to the private owner, and in exchange, we're receiving a like benefit to ensure that the public is held harmless or made whole in some way, and that is the way that I view this transaction, is that having a donation for the park is recognizing the value they're receiving for obtaining the alleyway.
Thank you.
This is Morgan Bisaw, I apologize. I had also asked Bill Nichols if the council had any concerns about this, to be able to speak to it as well, and so he might be able to address those concerns of yours as well.
Okay, my assumption is that all of this has been reviewed by Bill, and all of the agreements, as well as the application, and that it's totally legally sufficient. Is that correct, Bill?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we believe that it is. One thing I'd point out and remind you is that the city's interest in this alley is really akin to an easement, an access easement and a utility easement. The, the way right-of-ways are treated in Idaho is that unless there is a deed of dedication for the entire right-of-way, it is treated as though it's an easement. And so the underlying interest, subject to that easement, if you will, actually remains in the ownership of the adjacent parcels. So, just in viewing this in terms of value or that sort of thing, you can look at it that way. Really, the question before the council is, is it in the public interest to vacate this, this section of alley, or some modified section, if you were to move the, the boundary of the portion to be vacated a little bit north? Is it in the public interest to do that? That's really the question. You can take into account, yeah, you can take into account a donation, or even if, per council member Sowers' comments, even if you wanted to look at this vacation absent the donation and say, let's determine this, whether we should vacate it, absent the donation and escrow agreement, and if the Kempthorns are truly charitable with regard to this thing, if it's approved, then it's a clear donation.
But legally, we don't, that's just a style thing, I take it. Legally, it's sufficient the way it's structured, this application.
We believe so, yes.
Mr. Mayor, this is, Mr. Mayor, this is Steve. Could I just quickly comment on, on Tom's comment?
Absolutely, please, please do, this has been really helpful back and forth, go ahead.
Yeah, Tom, I really appreciate your comment, and, and Colby's about optics. I guess I just want to emphasize, for whatever it's worth, the whole concept of the donation for the improvement of Roosevelt Park did not come from your staff. It came from the Kempthorns. And you kind of have to know them to understand it, and I didn't when I started this, but I do now. Their strong sentiment was, if we do this, we want people to feel that the public has benefited from it. And, and the way, and, and yes, I suppose we could offer direct compensation, but, but the park is, is precious to that neighborhood, and obviously precious to them, and so they're the ones that said, look, if the city's willing to work with us on the vacation, and we want to donate the money for the park. And so, I guess people could, as Colby points out, could, could view the optics differently, but, but, but that, that comes from the Kempthorns, and is a genuine desire to, to have the overall evaluation of public interest be a positive one. And the only other comment relative to Mike's comments, that current owners don't own their property forever, I mean, that's absolutely true. But I would suggest to you that the only scenario under which internal access ever becomes an issue is if they or some future owner come forward with a development proposal on the Luisa parcels that are zoned higher density. If they do, again, as I've noted, there is every ability to say to that applicant, we want internal access, and we may want it exactly where the alley used to be, or we want you to provide it off of Roosevelt. But in any case, the owner would have the wherewithal to provide that and dedicate it at that time. So that hasn't been lost. Under the continued single-family residential use, that, there is no reason for that discussion, and there is no need for that strip of property.
Thanks, Steve, I appreciate it.
Thank you, council, really, really good discussion, lots of good thought. Steve, thank you, Morgan, appreciate it. And Annette, thank you for sharing some experience that you've had in another city, another state. I think we're gonna close the public hearing. I think we've had a really good discussion and all that, everyone's had a chance to provide input. I also sense that the council is ready to continue, meaning that we could move to making a motion, seeing if it's seconded, and then take a roll call vote. Before we do that, my suggestion as a member of the council is that we amend the application just slightly, using the information that Colby shared with us, for that, I believe it's the southern sliver nearest Pine Street. And Steve said that he thought, Steve Milliman said that that would be acceptable to the applicant, so I would suggest that we do that when someone makes a motion. And let me look at my notes for this agenda bill. We've conducted the public hearing, it is now closed. The second item on our agenda bill is to approve the vacation of right-of-way application as recommended, but if we choose to use the strategy I outlined, it would have to be amended verbally, and, and then we would, we would vote on that, if it got seconded. So let me ask for a motion for item two of our agenda bill, approve the vacation right-of-way as amended. Is anyone prepared to do that?
I'll do that. I'd like to make, this is Melanie. I'd like to make a motion to approve the vacation of right-of-way application, VAC-19-01, as recommended by the McCall Area Planning and Zoning Commission, and amended to the, I believe, western parcel border, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents.
And this is Tom, I'll second.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Melanie. And Steve, is that, did we describe that correctly, that amendment?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I think Melanie did so.
Thank you very much. All right. May I have a roll call vote, please? The motion has been made and seconded.
Council member Holmes?
Yes.
Council member Sowers?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Council member Machazek?
No.
Council member Nielsen?
Yeah.
Thank you, council, the motion passes, and I would like to compliment everyone involved in this discussion. I really appreciate the fact that this council, its staff, and people that represent the applicants are very forthright. We have a really good discussion, and I feel like we make informed decisions. This was a good example, I'm glad we spent the time on it that we did. Thank you all. With that, the motion passes, we are going to move to, let me get my agenda back out. We're gonna move to our business agenda, and I believe we have a presentation from Carla.
This is Bessie Jo, you had two other items to consider on that previous agenda.
Oh, that's right. To finish, thanks, Bessie Jo, before we go to the business agenda, we're only at step two. We need to approve the parks donation agreement, authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. Would someone make a motion for item three on our agenda bill?
Yes, Mayor, this is Melanie. I'd like to move to approve parks donation agreement and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Melanie. Is there a second?
Yeah, this is Tom. I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. A motion has been made and seconded to approve Parks Donation Agreement, authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
No.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes. Our fourth item that's involved with this vacation agreement is the approval of an escrow account. Would someone please make a motion?
Again, Mayor, this is Melanie. I'd like to move to approve escrow account agreement and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
This is Tom. I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. So Melanie made the motion. Tom seconded. A motion has been made and seconded to approve escrow account agreement and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machazek?
No.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes. Thank you, Bessie Jo, for keeping me on track. I think we're ready to go to Public Art Advisory Committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
This agenda? Okay. And on my notes, it said that Carla would be presenting the Public Art Advisory Committee Annual Report. Is that correct? Or is someone else? Okay.
Yep. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Giles and members of the council. So my name is Carla Idle, and I'm the chair of the Public Art Advisory Committee. So I'm here to report on our activities over the past year. First, I just want to say thanks to the council for continuing to support public art. This committee has been in existence since 2012. And since then, we can really look to a growing collection of artworks that have been assembled in McCall that I think are really positively shaping the culture in our community. The investment that's been made by the city and private donations over the years have also been leveraged with public grants, and that have helped us to grow the scope of the projects that we've been able to consider. So it's been, it's been a good, good growth. So this year, speaking of growth, we grew our membership from five members to, we now have seven members on this committee. So current members, current committee membership includes Craig Broome, Judy Drake, Susan Farber, Dave Pugh, Dallas Young, Claire Remsberg, and then myself, Carla Idle. And our staff coordinator is Delta James Economic Development Planner. So I'm going to go through our activities from this year in mostly chronological order. So, actually not chronological order, I lied, but Susan Madasche's work was installed on Lardo Bridge in September 2019, and that was an exciting culmination of a process that involves a lot of good public input and community events. And it was great to see that finally installed on Lardo Bridge, and I hope folks have been able to see that and enjoy it. The Railroad Avenue murals are a collaboration that the Public Art Committee has with the high school art program. So this year, three panels unfortunately were degrading, and so they were replaced. But it was, it was a nice opportunity to actually highlight more students' work on Railroad Ave. So that was nice. Plans are also in the works to replace the vinyl images in the public bus shelters, and that's a collaboration with the middle school art teacher. So another activity that we undertook this year was an inventory of all the public art in the city's collection, and our intention was to assess it for its condition, to note any damage, and then to work, to arrange for any needed repair. And so this will become a yearly activity that I think we'll be doing in the fall of every year. In the summer, in late July, we were able to do a joint work session on public art with the city council, and that was really valuable for us as a committee. I think it was a great discussion to get guidance from council on particularly the process that the council wanted to see with respect to, we talked a lot about the Second Street Art Project. And so as a result of this guidance, we went into our next artist selection process, thinking about the kind of process that council would like to see and how to get public input early on into the process and ensure that we had a really high-quality product. So we really appreciated the time and the attention that it took to just spend that work session together. So then in the fall, we were able to issue a new call to artists for the Second Street Public Art Project. We received 14 applications from a variety of really well-qualified artists, ranging from as far away as Alaska, and then nearby in Washington and Oregon and Idaho, and then a local artist team applied as well. So a separate selection committee reviewed the artist statement of qualifications and portfolios, and that's how our process works. So a committee that's separate from the Public Art Committee does the selection of the artists when we do a call like this. So the committee for this project included Fallon Faraday, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission Committee, Judah Garrison from Idaho Council on the Arts, and then community members Lynn Lewinsky and Thea Bellis. And then I served as a representative of the Public Art Advisory Committee, and then Delta helped guide us through that whole process. And so in the end, local artists, Erica and Jamie Leylaw, were selected by the committee, and then their appointment was approved by city council in January of this year. And so Erica and Jamie were tasked with developing a robust public outreach plan. It was to be the first thing that they did. So after this public outreach process, they'll then put together several proposals, one of which will ultimately be recommended. So their selection was, unfortunately, came right before COVID-19 disrupted the world as we know it. So that caused them to have to rethink their outreach strategy. But we were able to meet as a committee just a couple days ago when we heard an update on their outreach plans, and they've been really, I mean, not surprisingly as artists, been really creative in rethinking their public outreach strategy to be able to deal with the COVID-19 restrictions that we imagine will be in place for some time to come. So they're still in the process of developing this plan, but the ideas that we've seen so far have been really creative, and we're really excited for the way that they're thinking about it. Another activity that we took on is, in the late fall, we went through a selection process to identify a consultant who would be able to help us update the public art plan for the city of McCall. So we issued an RFP. It went out to a group of known professionals with a good set of qualifications. We reviewed their materials and then have a recommendation ready to go to bring to council. Unfortunately, though, because of the nature of developing a public art plan and the public outreach needed, we have been slowed down in that process because of COVID-19. So what we're doing at this point is we're going back to the consultant. We're going to ask that they amend their, the public outreach plan that was part of their proposal, and to see how they handle the constraints of the new world that we're living in, in the current situation. So we're optimistic that we'll be able to keep this process moving, and we feel really good about the applications that we got in this particular consultant. We think this will be a great thing for the city of McCall to have a really strong plan that identifies the philosophy and values of the community with respect to art, and then has a map, a metaphorical map for us to sort of look towards when we're thinking about new public art projects in the future. Finally, our latest project, we've received funding from the Sunsetting Urban Renewal Area, and we've just issued a call to artists for proposals for artwork in this area. So the artists will work with city staff to identify possible sites for art. They'll produce three proposals to be presented to the Urban Renewal Area Board. So that is just getting started, and that will unfold over the coming months. So I guess I just want to end by reiterating that we just really appreciate the council's support of the public art program in the city of McCall. Public art really does add value to a community economically and culturally. It reflects our culture and our history, and it's able, it allows us to showcase just the unique identity of who we are as a community. And I think those community connections are more important now than they've ever been. So it's uniquely and directly accessible, enables people to experience art in the course of their daily life, and that seems like a really good thing. So we just really thank you for continuing to support this program. And that's all I have to say.
Carla, thank you so much. I'm going to let council speak to you, but before we do, I want to thank both you and Delta. I want to go back to the discussion. Two things that you talked about. One was the joint meeting that we had. From my perspective, sitting on the council, what I observed was that was just such a breakthrough in terms of working together and having the confidence that you, as chairman in the committee that you work with, really understand what council is interested in and the kind of processes that we would like to see involved. And you have implemented those as a committee really well. And I know Delta has worked really hard to support that. That was a real breakthrough. And then I want to go to Second Street. That was the other indicator to me that council is really pleased with the staff work and the committee work and the thoughtfulness and the processes that you bring to us. And I feel like we are really gelling well and have a lot of confidence and are eager to implement the types of things that you bring to us. So I really appreciate your hard work. With that, I'm going to let council talk to you. Go ahead and jump in, anyone on council. Any questions or comments or compliments you'd like to pass along?
No, this is Mike. I would just like to say, Carla, thank you so much for saying thank you to the council. But you know, the amount of time and effort that you and others put into these committees is invaluable. So I'd rather turn that around and say thank you to you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. My pleasure.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Tom. Hey, Carla, thanks to all of your committee for all the stuff you guys are doing. I know there's a lot of hard decisions, and I'm really looking forward to our next project. So thank you, guys, again.
Thanks, Tom.
Carla, this is Melanie. I just want to thank you guys for all the work that you do. And I really also feel like that workshop that we had was a breakthrough in all of us getting closer to being on the same page and working together in a way that, you know, we all understand how this community wants to move forward. And I'm really impressed by what you've done since. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Delta, and Colby, I'd like to hear from both of you.
It's my unmute button fast enough here.
Go ahead, Colby.
Yeah, I want to mirror everyone else's comments. I think that the art committee is active and doing great work, and I also appreciated that work session last year to kind of revise the approach to public art. And I'm excited to see the, so thanks again for your hard work, Carla, and everyone on the committee.
Thank you.
Delta?
Mayor? Yes. Hi, Mayor and Council. I really don't have anything to add. The committee is fantastic to work with. I really appreciate Carla's leadership, and we have some exciting projects coming on the horizon.
Thank you, Delta. And we're, speaking for council, we're all looking forward to that. I think things are going really well. Keep up the good work. With that, we'll move on to our next item. Fourth of July celebration discussion and direction to staff. So this is an action item, and this is agenda bill. Well, let's see. I don't have an agenda bill number, but it says it's an action item that we're supposed to discuss and provide staff direction. Annette, are you helping us with this, or is this Justin, or who is going to lead us?
It's actually...
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, Mayor Giles, it's Erin and Justin who are going to be doing this discussion for you. And I'm happy to chime in at the end if you'd like.
No, that's great. I see Erin's face on the screen. So lead us, head us in, do this. I look forward to the discussion.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Erin Greaves, Communications Manager. We're going to tag-team this tonight with Chief Justin Williams. So I wanted to start out with letting you know that, as usual, communications has been working closely with Parks and Recreation within our city staff, evaluating Lakeside Liberty Fest and our availability through the COVID crisis and what our resources are. We've evaluated safety concerns, crowd control based on staffing. And from our perspective, we've determined that we definitely don't have the ability to maintain social distancing and proper hygiene for large crowds at Legacy Park for the Fourth of July events we typically have for Lakeside Liberty Fest, like the Bounce House and the water slides and the vendors and that type of thing. We also had many vendors who weren't quite sure where they fell and if they'd be available. So it was a safe bet that we pulled back from our normal event schedules. We've been working closely with the area chambers on the Protector Mountain Playground Initiative, and we're going to work hard to create a welcoming environment. We've got some, you know, patriotic flags and different things like that, working through Parks and Recreation. We've also partnered with the chamber on a community survey to sort of gauge community concerns and reactions towards fireworks, just to sort of give you and give the chamber the opportunity to kind of know in advance what they would be looking at as far as public outcries. And we had about 85% of the respondents as residential and second homeowners, the remainder of those being visitors. And it was pretty split, pretty heavy on both ends. Some people that were, you know, completely, this is Independence Day, we want our fireworks, and the other end that were super, super cautious. And so after that survey, the chamber and city staff, along with some other community partners, met, and we brainstormed some ideas. Those ideas were, excuse me, taken back to the chamber's executive board. And the chamber executive board has decided due to health and safety concerns, and again, drawing a large crowd, and what we have in place, that they've chosen not to submit a fireworks application this year. And so they are going to be pursuing addressing city council with reallocating their LOT funding to other activities that I'll go over here in just a moment. Mostly wanted to let you know that their executive team based this on being in line with Dr. Irvin and CDC and CDH recommendations for our area. And they really didn't want to put, which is lovely, the pressure on the city and our limited law enforcement, park staff, et cetera, to sort of maintain this elevated crowd in our parks. So they did actually go over some alternative options, and we were party with them and brainstorming those, things like moving the barge out further and opening up the viewing area to a larger surface. We talked about streaming those, and there wasn't a real outcry from the public interested in watching streaming fireworks. And then we had another brainstorm event, and we came up with some pretty fun ideas. And of course, the chamber is always our And of course, the chamber is always our guiding force for really fun things to do. So we thought about drive-in movies. Steph and I talked about a drive-in movie to take the place of our normal Fourth of July movie, and chamber's thinking about doing a drive-in concert with Jeff Crosby and kind of a light-up caravan that doesn't include people watching, but just people participating. They're throwing away a lot of fun ideas, party fun packs and all kinds of things. So they're going to solidify those plans based on budgetary needs and volunteers and whatnot that they might need, and we'll be able to come back to you, I would assume, in mid-June with a more solid plan as to what will be happening. They, I'll come back to you as soon as possible, but these efforts will be the majority pushed by the chamber, and we'll be there to support them however we can at the staff level. I do have Lindsey Harris on the line tonight if you have any questions directly for the chamber before we move on to Justin's portion this evening.
Yeah, I was just thinking, listening to you, that it would be good to have some dialogue with council and you and Lindsey before we move on to the next part of this discussion, the alcohol restrictions and that. So Lindsey, thanks for joining us.
Hi, everybody.
Do you have any quick comments you'd like to make? And if not, I was going to ask council, I'll call on them one at a time, to interact with both of you and see how we're feeling about the proposal.
So obviously, this was a very difficult decision, and you all should have the poll in front of you or it can be provided to you, but the results were pretty split. So either way, we knew we were going to be disappointing, or, you know, half of the respondents, which we had about 850 respondents, which for a survey is, I think, pretty amazing. And overall, the feedback was, I was surprised how respectful, I guess, the comments and the feedback was, regardless of people's vantage point and how they viewed it, that they were respectful and they appreciated that they had the opportunity to voice either their support or concern for fireworks. At the end of the day, we want to honor what the community is doing and what the, where the community lies, and as difficult as it is to not have fireworks. After the meeting with the collective parties last Friday and the energy and the positivity and enthusiasm there was for some new events that would be within guidelines and be safe, but still fun, it kind of solidified, you know, what we felt was the prudent thing to do. We understand we're going to get pushback, but we want to reassure the community and our businesses and visitors that are still planning to come. You know, town will still ideally, not ideally, but realistically is the proper word, will be busy, so we still want to provide opportunities for people, but we want to do it safely.
Thank you, Lindsey. Sounds like a lot of thought went into this, and I think Erin convinced us of that. A lot of good work went into it. So let me go through each council member. We'll start with Colby and let you ask questions and provide feedback to Lindsey. And Erin, do you feel comfortable with the direction they're describing that we're headed?
I'm kind of curious to hear the remainder of the presentation so we can kind of discuss the bigger picture.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's probably another important aspect that we should hear.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Tom, you feel good about what you're hearing so far?
Well, not at all.
Not at all?
Not at all, not even a little bit.
Okay, talk to us, Tom.
Fireworks based on an online survey, I don't think is realistic. But on that note, maybe we can take a look at if there was a, if we're not going to fund it, perhaps there's a private individual that might be very interested in funding our fireworks display or a business or somebody else. So I mean, I'd like to open up that discussion also.
Okay, Melanie?
So I have really mixed emotions about this personally, and, you know, I feel really, I feel really bad for all of the people having to make this ultimate decision because there's really no right way to go. But for me personally, I'm going to state that I am from a military family, and this is very important to me, and the people that would come here during that time of year are going to be here regardless. They're going to be watching the Sabala fireworks across the lake. And, you know, I think we could come up with something a little bit better in terms of how we look at this. I mean, the people that are offended by the contact that might be had, you know, have the option of not going. So that's just where I'm kind of leaning personally, and I understand that's just one opinion.
Thank you, Melanie. Mike?
Yeah, first, I mean, to Erin and Lindsey, I think that doing the survey was, is very valuable, and I think people having an opportunity to provide input is important. So I want to thank you for taking those steps. And I also understand that, you know, it's not an easy decision, but at the same time, I do want to affirm that while I understand all varying points of view without question, and there are many, I'm sure everybody has a, you know, a strong personal kind of feeling on what they prefer for a variety of different reasons, but there's something to be said for being prudent and thoughtful about the big picture, and I think you guys are doing a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you. This is Bob. I agree with Mike's comments. Erin and Lindsey, I think you guys are doing a great job. Keep it up. We will come back around to this, as Colby suggested, once we hear from Chief Williams. So let's move to that part of the presentation.
Me, Mayor, it's Colby. I just wanted to point out, I mean, I don't have results from the survey. I don't know if they are available or to see on the screen or something, but yeah, I have not been able to review any results of the survey. Anyways, that's all I got.
Thank you, Colby. Justin, would you help us through the next part of the presentation?
Can we hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I figured out how to unmute. Congratulations to myself. Justin Williams, Chief of Police, here to talk to you tonight about the Fourth of July and Lakeside Liberty Fest, and can discuss the fireworks and the reasonings behind some of the thought process and what went into that and what we see in the future. Also wanted to talk to you tonight about alcohol restrictions. We have received a tentative date from Valley County and believe that IDPR will match the dates. Valley County has chosen the dates of June 29th through 7th, 6th through July 6th for alcohol restrictions at all, like public parks, and I believe they may be restricting them to lakeside parks. That's not something that we would be recommending for something that long during that duration. Our recommendation for this particular event for the restrictions of lakeside parks, waterfront parks, would be Friday through Sunday, which I believe would be the 3rd through the 5th. This is the first time during the alcohol restriction phase that we've had the last several years that has been very successful in changing the mentality of the event, the safety of the event, and the overall attendance of the event and demographic of the event to run for those three days during that timeframe, simply because of the fact this is the first weekend that we've had during this time that we've had these restrictions in place, and this will be the sunset of the MOU that we have with the county. We have deviated from their dates the last several years simply because of the fact that the issues that we had always seen previously to enacting these measures had reduced drastically with the change in demographics and the people that were coming. And so I bring to you tonight the recommendation of Friday, July 3rd through Sunday, July 5th for lakefront, waterfront, park alcohol restrictions.
Thank you, Justin. Anything else that you wanted to share with us?
I know that we've talked about the fireworks, and the issue about the fireworks is the congregation, and people do say that in, there is an agreement that we will see people that are there. However, when you congregate that many people in one space for a particular event, and that's what we're looking at, it is one particular event that draws a very, very large crowd. Look and see what the crowd is and how close people are going to be. The resources that we have in place, we could do nothing about it, period. It's not something that we could enforce social distancing. There are no measures that we could simply take, and it's a matter of health and safety in our opinion. It's also a matter of fact that what is the city trying to promote? Are we trying to promote the social distancing? Because if you listen to the governor and everything that's been happening after this, even after we exit stage four, there are still going to be implementations of social distancing and recommendations of mask wearing and things of that nature. This is not simply a pandemic or an epidemic that we can flip the switch and everything goes back to normal. It's just simply not going to happen that way. We need to be good stewards of the community and of our representation and lead by example. And we cannot, with the staff that we have, parks, police, any other city staff, anyone that we bring in to assist, because now we only have the four resident troopers from ISP that come and assist us simply because we have a different demographic now. It is that mass congregation. If you listen to Dr. Irvin talk about it, it's the mass congregation and the possible spread. Sabala's, their fireworks was mentioned earlier, I believe. It was Melanie. They're not putting in for their fireworks until mid-June simply to wait to see what stage that they are in. And ultimately, the decision lies with myself. I am the one that signs off on the fireworks. And so I would need to be convinced that there is a public need greater than the public safety. And so it's not that I am opposed to that, it's just that right now we are still six weeks away from finding out what stage we're going to be in, and there is the possible likelihood that we are not about to exit stage two. If you've listened to the governor and what he said, we very well could be stuck in stage two and not move into stage three simply because of what's going on in the state of Idaho at the moment. And so we're gambling on the unknown. I understand that we have to prepare for that, absolutely. We are considering it. I've been in contact with the Sabalas and Nick Sabala and talked with him on the telephone about this, and said that if something was approved, it could be tentatively approved, but you have to explain to me how you're going to carry out the social distancing aspect. And so those are some of the decisions, decision points and the factors that go into us looking at the fireworks display. And it's not the City of McCall fireworks display, you know, the chamber is very involved in that and do quite a bit with the Fourth of July and what all we do. And so there are partners to be considered, and we need to be respectful of their decisions as well.
If I may, if I may add...
Yes, Erin.
Just to clarify that, so I heard Mr. Sowers. So just to clarify that the fireworks are paid for through a local option fund, local option tax funding, but they're actually put on by the chamber, and then chamber actually solicits donations from our area businesses to put those on. It's my understanding, just for information purposes, that they have to have their order in by June 1st for their fireworks. And so there was also some concern there, if we didn't move through the phases appropriately, that they would be sitting on fireworks that they wouldn't be able to use. So that was definitely part of the decision-making process as well. And then the other thing I wanted to mention that wasn't brought up is the CDC recommends varied sanitation stations, and so they have to be cleaned often when you have a crowd of that size, and we definitely do not have staff to maintain appropriately sanitation stations and bathrooms for a large public gathering. So that was a big part of our decision through Parks and Recreation as far as our portion. But I know that the chamber was interested to hear what you had to say, and so we look forward to your guidance tonight about the fireworks and your alcohol restrictions way forward.
Before we go to that, Erin and Lindsey, is it fair to say that CDC, your discussions with the Health District, that they encouraged or supported the position that you, that the two of you shared with us tonight? In other words, were your plans that you brought to us for not doing the fireworks? And I would ask the same question of Justin with the alcohol. Has that, was that informed by not only the governor's weekly talks to you, but Central District Health?
I can answer that if you'd like. So everything that we have done thus far in the City of McCall has been based on recommendations from the federal government, from Central District Health, from the CDC, and from the state level. We have followed in step with what those best practice recommendations have been. We're also listening to the local health authorities as well. And so when we make these decisions, I realize that the decision-making process that I'm going through and the choices that we make are not always going to be popular. However, we're doing them with the best recommendations and the most information that we can. We're making these decisions as prudently as possible and with as much information as we can. They're not just something that we come off the cuff with and decide to do something. And so the recommendations and the reasonings of the cancellation of the fireworks and the mass crowds is simply based, you're exactly right, Mr. Mayor, it's based on the inability to service a large gathering. If you look at stage four, we're at 10 to 50 people for large gatherings, I believe is what the numbers are. How many more people are going to be at this? And we're just going to be a week or two removed from stage four if we make it to stage four at that time, which is still very questionable. And so while you have to plan for these events early, it's too far out to be comfortable to make that decision. And so if we're forced to make the decision right now, based on the recommendations that we have from medical staff, from CDH, from the state, our recommendation is not to host a large gathering, which this, it would exactly be a very large gathering, and we would be promoting that. And can you imagine what would happen if we would see a spike in infections like other states have seen that have hosted large gatherings, and then the contact tracing that comes back and says it was from the City of McCall that hosted the fireworks display?
Yeah, I, council, I would like to hear from each of you, but I don't see how, I don't see how we can do anything different than what has been brought to us. And the reason I say that is the last two months, the good staff work and the good direction and interpretation from Central District Health, from the governor's office, just all the things that Justin has talked to us about, and Erin and Lindsey, I don't see how we can do anything different now, moving ahead into the month of July. But I'd like to hear from each council member. Go ahead.
Oh, this is Mike. I'd be happy to speak. Yeah, number one, as it relates to the decision related to fireworks, you know, I think you are correct, Bob, in my opinion, and I want to say to Justin, I absolutely believe in your judgment and leadership, and I think you're spot on. I also don't want to put our officers at unnecessary risk if there were to be a larger gathering, which inevitably we're going to have a large gathering whether there's fireworks or not. So I think mitigating for those issues, I think the way that, Justin, the way you've represented it, and Erin, I very much appreciate the thought and the time and effort that you put into this and covering all the bases as best we can, you know, in an uncertain time. I would also, the other item, I'd also suggest that we do follow Justin's recommendation regarding alcohol for similar reasons and based upon the past. So those are my thoughts.
Those are my thoughts, too. I'd like to hear from everyone, though.
Mayor Giles, this is Lindsey. If I may, I think, I have a feeling that there are some council people that are kind of in shock of the notion of not having fireworks, so if I could just have a moment to speak to that.
Sure.
Um, I have had the privilege, or I don't know, I don't, I wouldn't call it a privilege, of stewing on this for the last couple of weeks. This is something that we've taken incredibly seriously, and we understand this symbolism behind fireworks. incredibly seriously, and we understand the symbolism behind fireworks, and the importance of that, and not feeling prohibited from celebrating. But at the end of the day, I mean, I, I, I'm, I under, I don't want to put anyone at risk. And it boils down to how we can sleep at night. And if we hosted an event that incited an outbreak or was, put our community at risk, we just couldn't really live with ourselves for that. We would rather save lives theoretically than move forward with something that we feel like we can't safely do, and in conjunction with city co-op, you know, cooperation. So, that is, we understand that it's a shock to everybody, and I'm in shock as well. But I really want to inject a vein of positivity that we feel like we can still celebrate and we can still come up with great things. And we need to focus on the things that we can do versus the things we can't, which to me, harkens back to this alcohol conversation that many of us did four years ago, when that was such a shock to the system. But look at the positivity that came from it. And we've grown as a community from the, you know, the difficult alcohol restrictions. So, I just, I want you to know that we have full faith in our marketing abilities and in our positivity to be able to still promote the fourth and what it stands for. And I understand people are kind of reeling from this concept that there wouldn't be fireworks. But it's one year, and, you know, obviously, we hope to be back up and running as normal. Not normal, there will be no new normal, but, but you know what I mean. So, I'm happy to field any other questions, but I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thanks, Lindsay. That's really, really helpful. Appreciate your comments.
This is Colby. Yeah, thank, thank you, Lindsay. I'm sure there's been a lot of really interesting, not fun conversations happening surrounding this. And I appreciate all the thought that you guys have put in to your decision-making process. And I think that it's a very pragmatic decision-making process, at least what you guys have laid out here. My concern is for the non-pragmatic thinkers among us. I'm really honestly more concerned about the, the response to, to not having fireworks, you know, if there's going to be, be people up here, what sort of ideas people might get to be uber patriotic or defiant in their own ways. And I foresee that being a big burden on the, the police force. And pretty concerned about, concerned about the response on this, really. You know, it's not the, you know, it's, it's not the city of McCall fireworks show. It's the chambers fireworks show. And where we've got a park, you know? It's a tough, it's, it's a lot to digest here. A short, short notice. And yeah, this is, I think will prove to be one of the more challenging discussions any of us will have for a while, because there's some, some major impacts to it, and to, to our community, to our economy. But I really, really, truly appreciate everyone who has presented and brought forward the practical, pragmatic conversation, thought process with community health first. That's important. That's all I have for right now.
Thanks, Colby. That's really well stated. I, I agree. We have some really good staff work. Let's see, Tom, we haven't heard from you this go around, right?
No, I, I just, I, I feel like right now, all of our leadership has kind of, they've made the, the decision. I think Chief Williams has made the decision. And, and I, I don't believe that we're reacting to a, to a pandemic. I believe we're reacting to something else, and I don't know what it is, because the, the math doesn't match what's really happening. You know, we're, we have people that are being affected because they're out of work, because they're, you know, they're not able to see loved ones because they're being restricted by the government. We're not, we don't have people that are dying of COVID or anything else. We have, we have people that are being frightened because we're taking drastic measures to, I, I don't know, to, to, to get the boogeyman, or whatever we've described this thing as. I think Dr. Sousa, or the, the St. Luke's Director, described it as hiding in crowds and things. And it, that's not the way diseases work. They don't hide. You know, I think we're overreacting to something right now.
Well, in fairness to our chief, he's, he's paying attention to what our governor is talking about for small communities, and what the chamber and-
I, I understand, and I understand, Mr. Mayor. It, it's not an argument point. I'm making a statement. You know, like I said, everybody's, everybody's cut their line and they're drawing their line in the sand. And I believe people have the, should have the freedom, if they want to go outside and do things, to do that. And if they want to remain safe, it shouldn't be because the city of McCall has made a rule that they have to be safe. Part of life is taking risk. And, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't send our police out on the street if we didn't want them to take a risk. We wouldn't send our soldiers into battle if we didn't want them to take a risk. And it is each individual's responsibility to determine whether or not they should take that risk.
So, Annette, I'm gonna, this is a little bit unusual. So, this was supposed to be an action item set for discussion and staff direction. We've certainly had a lot of discussion, and really frank and, and good discussion. I do not think that this council has consensus. And I doubt that we could, in the next two hours, structure any motions to demonstrate any kind of direction further than what you've heard. I'm, I'm kind of at a loss at that. I would suggest that Chief and Erin and Chamber of Commerce continue on the path that they, that they've started on. What are your thoughts, Annette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the only action item for the council is the alcohol restriction, giving direction to Justin on what to bring back as a resolution for you to put that in place at a future meeting. As has been mentioned, the fireworks display is an application that would be submitted by the Chamber of Commerce. It's not a city-sponsored display. But if they are not going to submit that application at some time in the future, you will have a different item before you to consider allowing them to use those LOT funds for other Fourth of July events and activities that they want to host and have our support. But again, that's not on tonight's agenda. So, if you want to have us schedule another discussion, we can certainly do that if you feel like you're not ready to make a decision on the alcohol restriction. And then, I also wanted to remind you that Kurt Wolf is also on the phone if anyone had questions or wanted to hear any information from the Parks Department perspective. But my overall feeling is that whatever we end up doing, I think it's really important that the Chamber of Commerce and the city are on the same page and able to promote whatever version of the Fourth of July is going to happen this year, and still encourage people to patronize our businesses and be good visitors. We're certainly open for business and wanting our economy to get back up and running strong in a safe way. So, I certainly wouldn't want to send a message out that we've just shut down McCall for the Fourth of July. We're talking about one event out of, you know, the entire weekend that could be replaced with many other really great events, family-friendly things to do. And I really do appreciate the chamber executive team wrestling with this issue, because it is going to be something difficult. I'm sure they're going to get a lot of feedback, as are the, are we, about whether or not they put forward their application for the fireworks display. So, it is a really tough year. I know there's several communities across the state that have decided to not do fireworks for the same reasons. But I'm aware there are other communities that are moving forward. And one of the things that hasn't come up, but I know was discussed previously, is that if other communities around us decide they're not going to do their displays, and we do, we could end up with a lot more people than normal, whether that's good or bad. It's just a possibility. So, again, I, I echo what Lindsay and Erin and Justin have said, that this is a really tough issue. We know it's a hard issue, and that it's, no matter what we do, someone will be unhappy, and other people will be happy. So, we have to kind of think of, you know, what's in the best interest of the community, and definitely need your feedback and guidance on that, because we don't want this to end up being something divisive. We want to feel good that we're doing the best we can to provide a really good, family-friendly, healthy atmosphere.
Thank you, Annette. So, council, are you, are you, do you want more time to answer the question about whether you want alcohol restrictions? Or are you ready to take a roll call vote on the recommendation, which was three days? I'd like to hear from each of you. And if you're not ready, I guess, you know, we could wait till the next meeting. But let's hear from each of you. Let me start with Tom. You ready to address that?
Well, I mean, if we're not having any events, I don't see a reason to have alcohol restrictions. So-
Just to clarify, if I may, Mayor, there were events that were proposed, and that perhaps I didn't go into them deep enough, because they are still tentative, based on your approval of local option tax funds being transferred for a different use. But some of the events that were discussed were things like the patriotic boat brigade. We talked about some dress-up and contest days. Like I said, the drive-in movies. There's drive-in concerts that we've talked about partnering with 95.5 or another local radio station to broadcast a live concert to the community. We've talked about a lot of different family fun packs and incorporating our local businesses in some of those. And we're just really hoping if, you know, we could reallocate those funds for the chamber, that the chamber could come up with some really wonderful events that would allow people to, for lack of a better phrase, I heard, move around in their own pods to keep themselves protected, but still really enjoy the Fourth of July weekend. So, I just wanted to clarify that we will be having events. They just won't be large masked, masked gatherings in one location to watch one event. Just to clarify.
So, Tom, does that, does that help paint the picture then? Do you, with, with Erin's explanation, do you feel we need a three-day alcohol restriction?
I do not.
Okay. Melanie, your opinion?
I'm not on board. No.
Okay, Colby?
Yeah. There's, there's kind of a lot to unpack in this conversation. Oh, we're having kind of two different discussions on-
Well, Annette asked, Annette asked us to provide some direction. And if we're not ready tonight, we can hunt till next meeting. But we're trying to focus on, you know, the, do we feel that there is some need for some kind of alcohol restriction, similar to what Chief Williams brought to us?
Can, can I reiterate something real quick, please, Mayor? There's an MOU that we are a part of. It has, it's, and the MOU referenced the alcohol restrictions. So, we're looking at the dates, is what we're trying to determine. So, you would need to look at the MOU and choose to decide if you're going to do away with alcohol restrictions. Then you would need to look at, I might need some guidance from Bill on this, but I'm thinking that the MOU would need to be rescinded. Bill, can you help me out with that? Mr. Nichols?
Mayor and council, I'd have to look at the MOU again. And we'd have to look at terms of whether there's notice requirements and the rest of it in here. And I, I don't remember the terms well enough to offer an opinion right now.
What I was hoping for is to get a sense of, Justin, whether, whether this council is in favor of a three-day alcohol restriction, or a two-day, or some other, you know, number like what we've done in the past. That's what I was trying to find out.
Yes, sir. I, I was just getting the, the feeling from a, a couple that, that there would be no alcohol restrictions. For instance, Councilman Sowers said, if we're not having events, don't restrict the alcohol. But I, I needed to interject the fact that we are in that agreement, that this is simply trying to determine the number of days in which the alcohol restrictions would be put into place, and that deviating from that might take more than what we can do at this moment with the council.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Have, have we heard from everybody? I don't think, Colby, you finished, did you? So, let's, let's go back to you.
I didn't. Annette, what, what are the other, I guess this is the first one. What are other communities doing? You said there's a few that have canceled fireworks. And within those communities, is that a, a chamber event fireworks? Or like what, can you paint a picture about what other communities in our state are doing? And second, have we had any conversations with Don Leaning Meadows Cascade to get a sense of what's going on with the other communities? You know, I feel like we, we are having two, kind of two different conversations here that, you know, if we keep it strictly to whether or not we should have an alcohol ban for three or five days. I, Chief, I'm really close to going against my usual protest vote. But, yeah.
I can actually speak to that, Annette, if you'd like, because we did have those conversations.
Okay, great. And also, I'll just remind you, Kurt's on the line, and he may know too. But, Colby, my understanding is, and I don't remember which city it is down in the valley, but I believe they switched from a fireworks to a laser show or something. I think there's a whole variety of things happening. As you know, the mayor and I sit on a weekly conference call with the governor and the cities, and that question of whether or not people should have fireworks displays was specifically asked of the governor. And he said it's really community-dependent. He wasn't going to say we can't have them. He did, however, strongly encourage crowd control and being cognizant of where your venue is at, and how you're going to do it. So, we didn't get direct guidance, I would say, from the governor's office. I think he understands this is a tough decision for each community. But yeah, Erin and Kurt could probably speak more to the, our local neighbors and what they've heard from other places.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just, and then go into Kurt's. I think Kurt's talked to other Parks and Recreation departments across, I think he's involved in the country, actually. But we know for a fact, and Lindsay, correct me if I'm wrong, Cascade is looking on how they're going to reshape their fireworks, and they're not quite sure what that looks like. But they have discussed canceling their parade. So, we do know that, that that's happening locally. Um, so we do know that, that that's happening locally. Um, we also know that um, there's a lot of turmoil happening in that area as well, and I think all of us are working collectively, all of us as chambers. In fact, we discussed the possibility of, you know, Jeff Crosby doing two nights of a, of a concert, one in Cascade and one in McCall. So we just want to really push that we're working united with our entire region to make sure that the, it's a successful holiday and that we can do as much as we can for our public and visitors. And Kurt, if you're on the line, do you want to speak to what you know from other communities and possibly also mention your PPE?
Uh, thanks Erin, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so it's, it's really, it's similar to what we're dealing with. Everybody's postponing that decision as long as they can. They're waiting as long as they can to sign contracts for fireworks um to just see how things happen with the reopening of facilities, to see if there's outbreaks. Um, so they're in the same fault. Um, Post Falls is not doing it. Um, Holman, Washington, which is the border community to Moscow, Idaho, is uh, they are, but they're trying to keep people in their vehicles. They're in a unique situation because it's kind of surrounded by hills. At least that was the last conversation we heard from them. Um, in other communities around the country, uh, based on some of these conference calls, we're having a weekly, you know, Georgia, a few number of communities involved there have not decided yet. Um, and a, a number of Cali- uh, California districts are not doing fireworks. So that's what we're hearing again. Does it add clarification? That's tough. Um, and uh, you know, and again, just to speak to the previous conversations around the gathering and whether we can uh, you know, staff and do that, the, the big question and concern we have also is can we provide the proper, you know, PPE to our staff to, to handle large crowds like that and keep up with the janitorial and the services that we will need to do?
And uh, follow up. What, what, what does our city look like? What do you see in parks' legacy, et cetera, look like on that weekends, even when we're not doing a fireworks show? Um, you know, my concern is even if there's not a fireworks show, that, that here, you know, this restriction will be altered not because of lack of social distancing already happening in town here, you know? This is, you want to get a meta question? There you go.
Hey, Colby, this is Justin. Uh, in, in reference to that, we do anticipate that there are still going to be people here. Uh, there are still going to be persons at the beach. There are still going to be people that aren't social distancing, that aren't following the recommendations. We absolutely understand that and don't think for a moment that we believe that we can prohibit that or control all of that. But what we can control is, is an event that draws people. And that event that draws people and puts them into that situation is specifically what we're referring to in, in our comments. Uh, we believe that there are going to be people here, no doubt. And a- as you point out, how are those people going to interact? My best guess is that many of them are not going to social distance. There will be some that do, but if you've been to the valley lately, you will notice that probably maybe one in fifteen people are wearing a mask and there is zero social distancing. And we're seeing that play out in the city right now with more and more visitors that are coming up. And so we do anticipate that that's going to happen, but that's not a city sanctioned event. That's not a city-sponsored event drawing those masses of people. So we will have to deal with that, but there is a, a, a venue uh for the city to delineate itself from th- that particular event and not sponsor event that would draw those crowds and put them in that situation. And to me, that's the main difference is that we would be uh co-sponsors of an event that would put people into this specific position, draw them to that specific position and expose them to uh a possible exposure of, of what it has been seen in other areas. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so that, that, that does make sense.
Um, and that, I think, helps clarify to um something is the, in the other part of this discussion is the, the sponsorship by the city of an event. Um, you know, that's, that's where I'm having a little bit of trouble with, where we're having kind of two separate conversations.
Yes, sir.
The fire, the fireworks event and the city's sponsorship of such, you know, I think that it, it, that's a whole different discussion of whether or not the city uh should sponsor the Chamber and if, any of their events, which, I mean, hope I wouldn't be the only one to think that that would be obvious that we should. Um, but.
It's, it's a lot to take in.
Yeah.
It honestly is, especially if you were not aware of the conversations that were being previously held and, and in all of these meetings and committees and governors' calls and conference calls and CDC recommendations, and if you're, if you're not staying up to speed on it, uh, this is something uh that can catch you by surprise. And we had anticipated, when we found out that there was a finality, that the Chamber was not going to submit their application, then we knew that there was going to be some heartache on, on both sides of the aisle. But we also understood that uh the alcohol restrictions are not dependent on uh the, the, they're mutually exclusive from the, the fireworks display because we are still going to see people there uh at the park. This is on a weekend. Uh, we, you know, uh, this is something, we didn't have events previously uh prior to Lakeside Liberty Fest. Uh, all we had was a fireworks display and look at the numbers of the college kids and the boats and all of those things that were there. So we could definitely see a crowd, but we just don't know. We're trying to predict the future six, eight weeks in advance, and we're doing it with the best information that we have on hand at this time.
If, if I could also interject um to further address Colby's question is, you know, in, in the last ten years, we, you know, every, every day on a busy weekend around the Fourth, we see large crowds and we have significant cleanup in the morning, but it's, it's not even comparable to the, the morning of the Fifth and what, you know, staff has to deal with and clean up. It's a lot better now um with the alcohol restrictions, but it's still a huge mess. It's a, it's just a different mess. Um, it's consolidated, it's a friendlier product to clean up. I guess you could put it that way, but uh, so without a big, large gathering after dark in a park, I, I, I think, yes, we'll have a mess, but it won't be that same type of concern, especially around, you know, a pandemic and required PPE and the, the concerns of staff that are actually doing it. Because some are, are sensitive to it and others aren't. That's just the nature of the situation right now.
So Kurt, and Kurt and Justin, this is Bob. Are you, it sounds like both of you are recommending to us that we um at some point adopt or make a motion at some point and have an ordinance for a three-day alcohol restriction, even if we don't do fireworks. Is that correct? Am I interpreting your direction correctly?
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is Justin, and yes, absolutely. I would be making that recommendation independent of whether or not a fireworks display uh occurs or not, because the fireworks display is, is not something that the city puts on. Uh, that's a decision to be made by the Chamber of Commerce, as we've reiterated. Uh, however, there will still be people, there will still be some sort of events, there will still be gatherings, and so my recommendation would remain the Third through the Fifth. Yes, sir.
Kurt, your opinion on that from Parks and Recs?
I, I also agree.
You, you said you honestly agree?
I also, I also agree with Justin.
Also agree. Annette, your opinion?
Well, yes, I mean, we would, um, I think it's been a good uh strategy to promote a healthy, family-friendly environment over the Fourth. Um, but again, it's the council's call.
Okay, I agree um with your input, Counsel. Do you want to try to wrestle with this and take a vote tonight, or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
Bob, it's Mike. I um, I already kind of stated that I think that uh we, I, I believe that we should follow Justin and Kurt's recommendation regarding alcohol um being restricted the Third through the Fifth. And I think from everything that we're hearing, you know, we need to be making a decision. I, I don't really, I don't, because of the situation, which, you know, none of us really like, um, nobody wants to be here, but um, you know, I, the situation where we're putting, excuse me, officers at potentially increased risk, the possibility that we're putting our park staff at increased risk, the pa- fact that we're, you know, we need to take all this into consideration, and I, and I think that the advice that we're getting um from Justin and from Kurt is valuable. So I'm personally ready to make a motion in this regard.
Would you please make a motion? And I would look for someone to second the motion. Go ahead, Mike.
It's Mike. I would like to make a motion um that the alcohol restrictions um are in effect between July third and July fifth for this year's um Fourth of July events in the city parks.
Thank you, Mike. Will someone second that motion?
Second, this is Colby. You got me, Justin.
Thank you, Colby. Appreciate that. A motion has been made and seconded to adopt a three-day um alcohol restriction at our public parks, city parks, the, the ones that have been recommended. And it is, the dates are July third, fourth, and fifth. May I have a roll call vote, please, on that motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Clarify, this vote is uh for an alcohol restriction. It's for public record, everyone knows. Yes.
Uh, Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
No.
Councilmember Sowers?
No.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you, Counsel. I think we've exhausted this topic for tonight, and with a really good discussion, not easy one, but Annette, I don't think we can gain any more uh out of this. So I'd suggest we move on to the next item, but your thoughts?
I agree.
Okay. All right, well, thanks, Counsel. Thanks for hanging in there and being um, you know, really paying attention and stating your opinions and participating.
My gosh.
Yeah? My gosh, what? Go ahead.
I'm ready for the next one, let's go.
Okay. Um, I believe the next one is Commission for the Libraries. We have two CARES Act mini-grants. They're very, very small, and we had thorough information in the packet. I don't sense there's a lot of, of controversy over them. Is Meg leading us through this, or is someone else?
Mayor, this is Delta James, um, Economic Development Planner, and I can lead you through these two agenda items as I'll be writing the grants.
Thank you, Delta. Go ahead and proceed.
So the, they are, you're correct, both of these grant opportunities are um made available through federal dollars um allocated through the CARES Act and then distributed specifically for humanities activities on down the line to Idaho organizations um which are administering those grant funds to local organizations. So the first one, which is Agenda Bill twenty-one-four-nine, that is a request to approve to submit a mini-grant for up to a thousand dollars to the Idaho Commission for Libraries. Um, the grant dollars would be utilized by the McCall Public Library to improve uh technology availability to people. For example, they would purchase um some laptops to, and hotspots to be checked out to community members so that students can keep learning and workers can keep earning.
Thank you. Any quick questions for Delta? Would someone make a motion to approve the submittal of that grant, CARES Act mini-grant?
Uh, this is Mike. Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve um submittal of the, I don't have all the language, CARES Act mini-grant application and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second, Colby?
Thank you, Colby. Thank you, Mike. A motion to approve submittal of an Idaho Commission for Libraries CARES Act mini-grant application and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents has been made and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion passes. So we're on to the next grant application. Delta?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. The second grant application is um to the Idaho Humanities Council. Again, it is CARES Act dollars being administered by that organization specifically for humanities programming and delivery um to Idaho humanities-related organizations, both nonprofit and public. The McCall Public Library provides a lot of humanities programming um on any given year and has um adapted many of those programs to be remote um and virtual now, and these grant funds, which are up to five thousand dollars, would continue to support um the providing remote opportunities for participation with um the humanities, both by students and adults.
Thank you. Would someone make a motion to approve this submittal?
Yes, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to approve submittal of an Idaho Humanities Council CARES Act grant application and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, Mike.
Colby?
Colby seconded. Thank you. Um, a motion has been made and seconded to approve submittal of an Idaho Humanities Council CARES Act grant application and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machazek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes.
Thank you, Counsel and Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. So now we're on to um the rejection of bids for um Phase Two Capital Project of Fiber Conduit. Who's going to present that?
Uh, good evening, Counsel, Chris Curtin, uh, Empolisist Manager. I'll be presenting it. Good evening. Um, I'm presenting the AB twenty-dash-one-fifty-five, a request to reject all bids for um our Phase Two Capital Project of Buried Fiber Conduit. This is a project that was to run this summer uh to install conduit on Dine Hard Lane extending from um the uh bike path where we came out last year uh down to Lakeview Street, as well as uh along uh Spring Mountain Boulevard uh to Litt Creek, turning west to Davis, uh is also with a, a, a lateral off of that to connect up the golf course and the clubhouse. Um, that project uh came in over budget and as well as uh the pandemic having caused delays in the ability of the vendors to deliver uh the materials necessary for thirty to twelve weeks out on that. We're going to present this for a rebid, uh shortening the scope of the project, but at this time, we'd like to reject all bids um and, and uh look, look to change the scope.
Thanks, Chris. I noticed in your packet that you gave us that uh, I guess all of them were over, over the government estimate, I would call it, but there was a drastic differences between all the bids. Can you talk to us about that?
Uh, yeah, a couple of the uh bids were under a Uh, yeah, a couple of the, uh, bids were under a million dollars, which would be, would be more or less in line with what we would expect. Uh, the other two were exorbitant. They were, um, uh, over a million, and one of them was even over 2 million. It was actually almost 2.4 million. I don't have, uh, uh, direct knowledge as to why their bids were so high, but I suspect that it's a result of being out-of-town, uh, contractors having to put their workers up, as well as, um, I think that a couple of those shops are, uh, union, were, union shops, so they have slightly higher per-hour wages. Um, the other two were competitive and were more, more locally. Uh, in fact, the, the lowest bid was from a vendor based out of Cascade.
Thank you. Any questions, um, before we make a motion to reject all bids? I'll look for a motion then, if there's no questions.
This is Colby. Uh, move, we reject all bids received for Phase Two Capital Project of Buried Fiber Conduit Installation for Spring Mountain Boulevard and Dine Hard Lane.
Thanks, Colby.
Second, this is Tom.
Tom, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to reject all bids received for Phase Two Capital Project of Buried Fiber Conduit Installation for Spring Mountain Boulevard and Dine Hard Lane. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Holmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion, uh, carries. So we're down to, um...
Thank you, council.
Yeah, thank you, uh, for briefing us. Look forward to the next go-round, Chris. Really appreciate it.
Weeks away.
All right. Um, so now we're down to the call for nominations for AIC, the Third Vice President. Um, we, we briefed council, um, I guess it was two weeks ago at a regular meeting, and at that time, there were no, no, um, people interested that sit on council, has to be an elected official. Um, I don't know that that's changed. It hasn't changed for me. I'm still not interested, but, um, is there anyone in the council interested that would like to be nominated for this opportunity? Okay. I think we can move on to the COVID-19 update.
All right, mayor, this is, uh, Annette Spickard, City Manager. Thank you. And Justin and I have an update for you on where we're at with that, and I'm going to turn it over to Justin, and then, um, I can add to that, and we'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Council again, Justin Williams, Chief of Police. For your bi-weekly COVID update, uh, as of last council meeting on 5/7, there were 2,158 cases in the state of Idaho. Currently, we sit at 2,506 cases. Uh, we're currently in Stage Two of Idaho Rebounds, or Rebound Idaho, I should say, which lasts May 19th through the 29th. Uh, if there are no spikes or, uh, other issues that arise, we should be moving into Stage Three, beginning May 30th. Currently, the city facilities are open for limited surface, uh, service. Protocols and processes are implemented and being carried out to ensure a safe environment for the staff and customers within the workplace. We continue to promote telework for those employees that are able to do so. Many employees have been, uh, re-entered into the workplace in phases, and we will continue to do that throughout the rebound phases. Public Works, Parks, and some others, uh, have their employees that are at full speed, uh, for the most part. Uh, they're working different shifts in order to prevent cross-contaminations and things of that nature. At-risk employees are still staying home at this time, and accommodations are being made for those particular employees, and essential travel is still minimized. The media campaign that Aaron has worked with, with the, uh, Public Information Officers of the, uh, Valley County, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, is still continuing, and outreach is still going on. Signboards are expected to be put into place here shortly. Uh, the phrase of "no before you go" is the catchline that is being used, and protecting our mountain community is yet another. Uh, we're sending communications to businesses, offering guidance on how to handle difficult situations and other safety protocols. As a matter of fact, I gave a, uh, speech and a question-and-answer period to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, regarding this topic and many things that the city has implemented, as well as the Police Department during these times. Uh, the Travel Advisory, uh, was released, encouraging patience and respect for our community. Uh, the businesses are remaining open now. Uh, as the governor stated, about 95% of the businesses could open, inclusive of restaurants, salons, and things of that nature. We are seeing more people in town with higher volumes of traffic, uh, with the higher volumes of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, and the higher concentrations of persons. We are beginning to see an uptick in our calls for service in comparison to what it was in the beginning phases of the stay-home order and the rebound, uh, phase of our response to the coronavirus. Out-of-state persons entering the state of Idaho are still required to 14-day self-quarantine. Valley County is continuing to coordinate with, uh, the EOC and the PIOs. As I said, we're continuing to coordinate with Valley County, I should say, and the main message continues to be that this place is special. Help us protect this place and the people that we love. As I said, road signage, web, digital media, and other business tools are being utilized. Uh, the EOC command staff is currently preparing for Stage Three, which would begin May 30th and run through June 12th, barring any setbacks. We already have the protocols set in place for the city facilities, and we will continue to, uh, work to provide that safe environment for the employees as well as the customers. Uh, nonessential travel will be allowed during Phase Three, and out-of-state visitors will no longer be required to self-quarantine during Stage Three. In addition to that, a, a note is that gatherings of 10 to 50 people may occur, provided social distancing can still be maintained, and that is something that has been reiterated over and over by the governor, is the fact that even when we get to Stage Three, Stage Four, or out of Stage Four, that they're still going to recommend the social distancing, and that's something coming from the CDC and the CDH, that until there is a quote "cure" or a vaccine, that social distancing is going to be absolutely necessary. Uh, although we are not yet in Stage Three, the city is planning for Stage Four. One thing that we've been very fortunate and diligent in doing is planning ahead and trying to forecast, and we've been, uh, very, uh, lucky, I would say, but been, with our diligence, we've been very good at being able to forecast where we're going to end up and at what point in time. Uh, Stage Four will be the stage that all personnel are, uh, required to return to work. We're implementing plans and, and collecting information from the department heads on what that will look like for their particular departments and how their staff will function. Uh, at-risk employees will be urged to make accommodations with Human Resources and Tracy Malvich to ensure that they'll be able to continue their job performance, uh, with, uh, any restrictions that are in place. We will have updated policies and protocols for the employees. We will continue social distancing and the wearing of PPE when necessary, that personal protective equipment. During that timeframe for Stage Four, we will identify all available resources and methods to deal with the influx of visitors that we previously discussed in the Fourth of July. A conversation that is not lost on the city, nor is it lost on the, uh, Police Department or other law enforcement or the parks and rec, that we will see an influx of people, and how is it that we're going to effectively deal with those crowds of people while providing a safe working environment for our staff. Uh, we'll also determine the necessity and continuation of the EOC and its staff, the Emergency Operations Center. Uh, during Stage Four, I will still be the Incident Commander until the EOC is completely dissolved of the need, and we will continue to submit reimbursement requests for the city as needed during that timeframe. So, uh, at Stage Four, I would anticipate that we will still have, uh, an EOC through that stage, and for a while afterwards, we will continue to operate as a skeleton crew, tidying up the loose ends that were, uh, left during the previous stages. So that is the update that I have at this time. Should you have questions, please let me know.
Annette, any, anything else you'd like to share?
Um, I think I just want to add that, um, in addition to taking care of the city as an organization, we are actively involved in taking care of the city as a place, and by that I mean, um, there are many, uh, collaborative work groups that have come together across multiple agencies and businesses to, um, help each other and work on, uh, ways we can successfully reopen and, um, get the economy back up and running, how we can partner and, uh, help each other with information sharing and communication. So I just want to really thank, um, Justin, all the work he's done. Uh, Delta James has been participating in, I believe, its weekly, uh, meetings with businesses and, um, other partners, um, regarding reopening businesses and what we can do. Um, and then Aaron, of course, has been participating with the other Public Information Officers across the region, um, and our federal partners as well, um, on a really collaborative effort to make sure that we are, um, giving similar messaging, um, coming out of what we learned from the governor's directive. So one example would be in our parks. We have signage about recreate responsibly, and that is, uh, dovetailing off of what the Forest Service is doing, and the intent there is that, um, we don't all come up with our scene, with different graphics and logos and terminology that's confusing to people if we're consistent, and they see it here, they see it out at the National Forest, they see it down in Boise in the parks, uh, or in the trail systems, that, you know, it's something they recognize. Um, so it's been a lot of extra work, but I think the benefit has been that we've built a lot closer working relationships across all these entities and, um, learned a lot about each other. So there are some silver linings, um, to all of this, um, situation that I think is really going to benefit us moving forward in new ways. Um, so I, I guess that's, and I think the only other thing I would add, just from a very small detail, is we are currently, um, in conversation with the St. Luke's Foundation about putting, um, portable hand-washing stations in our public parks and public areas for the summer. Um, St. Luke's is interested in promoting, you know, good hygiene, and so that's a, um, that'll be great to do that for people and have that amenity available for our visitors. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Annette. Thank you, Justin. Um, you know, as, as we walk around town, those of us that are on council, we hear a lot of compliments about the direction and the leadership that the city is providing, and we appreciate all the work that, for every one of those people that you mentioned, Annette, and I think it's, it's been really, really good. It's, it's nice to hear those compliments from businesses, from citizens in our community. They do appreciate, um, the proactive stance that the city has taken. Well, I think we're on to upcoming meeting schedule.
Sorry, I gotta flip to my page here. Okay, so, um, tomorrow morning is our special work session at 9:00 AM on our budget kickoff. Um, so we'll do a high-level overview of the process for this year. I believe you've already received a packet that has the calendar of dates and items like that. Um, so just to get everybody oriented to what, um, our, uh, challenges will be this year in preparing the budget for you, and we'll have multiple meetings with you. So, um, you'll have plenty of opportunities to ask questions and dive deep into the details after tomorrow, and we'll also be presenting, um, the recommendations from your local Option Tax Commission. They've finished their process and come up with their prioritization of, um, applications for you to consider, and so they'll be available to answer questions and go through that material with you tomorrow. Um, and then, let's see, everything else, I think, has been out there. Um, do you want me to place an agenda item on June 4th or June 18th, um, regarding, uh, Fourth of July again, or just the resolution related to the alcohol restrictions? Um, I didn't know if you wanted another discussion item or keep the next one focused only on the, um, resolution for the restrictions? We're happy to do it either.
Counsel, what's your thoughts on that?
This is Colby. Um, excuse me. Uh, you know, I, I'm not clear on what, what any other decisions the city really has in this matter, um, besides having the, the alcohol restriction in the park, you know? Outside of that, we, we don't really have many decisions, whether or not, I guess, whether or not we want to support, uh, the, the chamber, but, I mean, that's, that's my thoughts on it.
Okay. Melanie? Do you want this topic again, June?
You know, I'm still in shock from tonight, so I don't know.
Okay. Um, how about, uh, Mike? Do you think we need to revisit this June 4th?
Um, I don't. I, like, like Colby said, you know, we had the discussion about the alcohol, the chamber's decision to do fireworks is a chamber decision, so I don't think we need to add it.
Tom?
Well, I, I mean, if something changes, uh, it, you know, it's, uh, you know, like we said, it's the chamber's decision, the, it's their, their funding and, and, uh, unless we can fi, unless there's another way. You know, I, I really would be interested in finding out an alternative, you know, if social distancing is the, uh, the issue, you know, can we have the fireworks in another location? Maybe pu, maybe have everybody in the airport or a larger area. Uh, you know, I don't know. I'm, I'm really, uh, I'm really looking for, uh, answers rather than just saying no because we're all going to die, because we are all going to die one day.
Okay. All right, Annette. I think, you know, be creative, see what you need, what we need to bring forth.
Okay. Um, I think that's it. Um, the calendar will get more filled in once, um, you approve the budget calendar. Tomorrow morning, we will have additional work sessions and items, um, that will fill up a lot of your time, uh, this summer through August because of the budget process, so while it looks a little light tonight, uh, trust me, it'll get filled in. Um, is there anything that council wanted to bring up or add, or ask for us to consider getting back on the agendas anywhere?
Um, this is Mike. I don't, um, this isn't an item to add to the agenda at this point in time. I did want to bring, um, people up to speed that, um, as it relates to the, um, progression with the, um, future lake management plan and the current situation with the, the, um, public hearing scheduled for the county commissioners. I did speak with, uh, Commissioner Bingaman today, and, um, just wanted to let folks know that one of the outtakes of that conversation was, um, that once this lake management item goes through, that we will, um, follow up and, uh, look towards having a meeting between the city and county related to next steps. So I just wanted to let everybody know that, um, there is continued work, um, occurring in that regard.
Thanks, Mike. All right.
This is Tom. I just had one thing.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, I know a, a long while back, we spoke about a farmer's market in our renovated downtown, and, uh, I sent out an email to some of the staff, and I just would like to see, you know, if, if that's a doable plan and, and how we could possibly make something like that happen.
Could you send me a copy of that email? I'm not sure I received it.
I will.
Okay. Um, yeah, the farmer's market, I asked a couple of questions about that today, um, out of just personal curiosity, and, um, it sounds like farmer- personal curiosity, and it sounds like farmer's markets have very specific health regulations that are expected to follow right now from the USDA and the CDC, which has created some staffing challenges, needing more volunteers, and the number of people that have to separate the handling of the goods versus the money and all kinds of things. So it's a little complicated this summer for those folks, is my understanding, but outside of that, I think we're still very interested in talking to them about utilizing Second Street in some manner. So yes, if you could send me that email, I'd be happy to make sure we get back to you.
Sure will. Thank you.
And this is Bessie Jo. I just wanted to speak to the council meetings for June. We're going to continue with this platform because we are required to social distance, and the size of the Legion Hall is prohibitive of having anybody but the council in there. So we are planning to continue with council meetings via Teams through June. If you guys have any concerns or questions or anything, please let us know.
Thanks, Bessie Jo.
On that one, are we considering any alternatives to Legion Hall for hosting meetings? Not to push for the social distancing thing, but just out of curiosity.
Well, the alternatives that we have that would allow for, for people to attend would be the school, and so that is always an option. The, all three of the schools have facilities that could accommodate that, so if the council would like for me to pursue that into July, I certainly can. Another option is to do a hybrid meeting where the council can all be in the Legion Hall, and all the presenters would present via Teams. So those are some options.
One of the things, Bessie Jo, you had mentioned to me that we are trying to do, and it makes a lot of sense, is we don't want to have presenters and council members having to wear a mask while they're trying to talk. Is that correct? So there's some limitations on where we can do it between now and July?
That is correct. I believe that the masks may not be, I don't know what the requirement will be in June, but that is correct. A mask would be required. It would be a little bit more difficult.
Okay. So before we adjourn, I want, I wanted to say a quick word. I would like to compliment everybody on this Teams platform, and I would like to specifically compliment every member of council. This is one of our tougher meetings in terms of, we have some pretty difficult issues, and one of the strengths of all of you on the council is that we take it real serious every issue, whether it's a vacation of an alleyway or all the way through this last topic about fireworks. I feel like you all do due diligence, you are respectful, and you speak up when, when you have an opportunity or asked. You provide frank discussion, are very honest, and I think that's a really good strength that makes me feel good when I go home that whatever decisions we made, they were thoroughly vetted and discussed. So keep up the good work on that. I appreciate it very much.
Oh, go ahead, Colby.
Oh, yeah, we're just working on speaking up here, Mike. I was just going to say that I don't know that further discussion for the fourth stuff is warranted on June 4th, but I think it might be good to at least have a placeholder just in case anything develops between now and then.
Good idea, Colby. Mike?
Yeah, I was, I was going to make a motion to adjourn, but I kind of wanted to add something to what you said, which I appreciate, which is, you know, I think while there's a variety of different perspectives and positions with the council, that I think the questions, discussion, and dialogue has been tonight, in particularly, very respectful, thoughtful, engaged, and productive, and with all of that, and like you said, it being, you know, some challenging topics and so forth, I also really want to compliment you, Bob, in running an excellent meeting. So thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you all. Would someone please make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. This is Mike.
Second. Tom?
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mike. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Everybody gets dressed. We'll see you tomorrow morning at 9:00 on the Teams format.
Good and early.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.